Okay. We are now on item four, items from council. Items A and B are both from the council legislative committee. A is a resolution adopting certain federal legislative issues as the city of Oklahoma City's 2022 federal legislative program. And item B is a resolution adopting certain state legislative issues as the city of Oklahoma City's 2022 state legislative program. Of course, every year we go through this exercise of deciding what our state and federal priorities are so that we give direction to our state and federal lobbying teams. The council legislative committee met a couple of weeks ago and adopted this program for the council's consideration, or I should say recommended this program for the council's consideration today for potential adoption. And I think we have Jane Abraham, who has managed this process for the city for a very long time.
For quite a while.
And could probably read many of these issues in her sleep. So Jane, we would love to hear an update on these two programs.
All right. So my name is Jane Abraham, and I'm community and government affairs manager. I work in the city manager's office. And yes, I've been managing this process for some time. And I feel very grateful to do so. I'll start off with just sort of talking about what our process is for legislative issues. We start off in the summer. It always seems so early to start, but it isn't. We start in the summer to ask the city manager, ask department heads, kind of what are different issues out there that need to be addressed, that require a legislative fix on either the state or federal level? And then those items are considered by the legislative committee that met October 28th this year. That committee makes recommendations to council, and then we work with our lobbyists to implement the program. So just a quick overview of the issues that were accomplished in 2021. We had a really pretty successful year, especially after 2020, when pretty much everything grinded to a halt because of the pandemic. We were able to make, advocate for changes to the Open Meeting Act to allow virtual meetings while we were in a state of emergency. We had enabling legislation for public safety districts, which we worked on for 14 years to get to that point. And then also allow municipalities to set public safety policies for public events, which was important to us. We had cleanup provisions for property turns and destruction orders, enabling COTPA to license CDL, licensed drivers, because that's been a really significant backlog right now. And then also allow the streetcar operator to tow vehicles blocking streetcars. So anyway, I'll stop reading through that list. You can see what those are. So in terms of our priority issues for the upcoming year for 2022, these are sort of boilerplate kind of items that we keep in place to allow us to advocate for increased funding for transit, to try to maintain local control over local issues, which is, tends to be kind of a defensive item. There are several bills filed during legislative session that are trying to preempt municipalities. And so we work to modify those or to maintain local control over things that we believe should be local issues. And then also to preserve our ability to address derelict property and enforce code zoning and design standards, and then also to try to address some problem properties that exist. And then in terms of our specific initiative items for 2022, we want to clarify the statute in Title 60 governing public trust, which this has been a heavy lift. It doesn't sound like it should be a heavy lift, but it's been, we've been trying to do this for a few years, but we're hoping that we can make that happen this year. Then we also want to protect public records and privacy interests, to try to balance those things, and then also update the fee structure and cost recruitment for public records release. There's some contradictory language in the statute that was passed last year governing the transport of weapons, weapons. And so we want to try to clarify that and address that issue. And then also enabling legislation to redevelop blighted areas. And then the public safety district legislation has some incongruities with the way that the tax would be, or that the revenue would be collected versus how it's laid out in the legislation. So we need to clean up some of those issues. And then also to amend the EMS response statute to address service delivery, which we all know has been a real challenge during this, during the time of the pandemic and beyond. Okay. So this is kind of a lot of talk, talk, talk. So in terms of our key support issues for the coming legislative session, we want to try to prevent fraud in sales tax collection with the permitting process, and that's an issue that the municipal league has been working on for several years. And so we support that effort. Also to make changes to the Open Meeting Act to allow virtual public meetings when there's other situations that arise. Then to also update the Oklahoma Residential Landlord and Tenant Act to increase protections for renters. And then also to make changes to the Capital Medical Center Improvement and Zoning District. And then additional key support issues are to support programs that promote healthy food, such as the T-Set Dollar-for-Dollar Matching Program. Also to address mental health issues for first responders through effective internal programs, and support the Regional Transit Authority as it explores different ways to find revenue for operations. And then we also have just kind of like general support issues. These also tend to be bills that will come up from year to year. So like retaining tools for economic development, making sure that we keep our election dates in place. Oh, I guess that's a monitor issue. And then also support efforts to maintain Clean Air Act attainment in Oklahoma, which is really important. And then just the monitor issues, I won't rattle through these. They're just, these are also items that we continue to watch. Our lobbyists kind of laugh that we have, we have a lot of issues to monitor. We end up, what, there are typically about 2,000 bills filed every year, plus we'll have the carryover bills from last year. So we end up monitoring a lot of the legislation that's, that's out there and looking at these various aspects to, to monitor and, and make sure that the city is not harmed with that legislation. So then moving on to our federal legislative issues. In terms of the priority items, the first one is, of course, the pandemic-related expenses and community support, which the city was very fortunate to receive direct funding from the federal government for a lot of different programs. And so we want to continue to monitor those and also to, you know, make sure that the, the funding that we're expecting comes through, and also to communicate back to our legislative delegation, the programs that we're doing and how we're spending the money. Because that's really important, to keep that communication process open. And then infrastructure investment, which you all know that the infrastructure bill was just passed by the House, and so now goes to the president. He's talked about, I guess they're signaling that he may sign that next week. So there's a lot of information, or there's a lot of funding in there that'll be very important to the city. And then also transportation and transit falls under that, as does airports. And then the implementation of opportunity zones and the economic development and local grant programs. In terms of support issues on the federal level, these items don't change very much from year to year. I think Mayor joked in our meeting that they've been the same for a very long time. But we do, we continue to support FAA operations, Tinker Air Force Base, Amtrak, which will, I think there's a provision included in the transportation bill to, to address Amtrak, also the National Weather Service, keeping that in Oklahoma, and long-term reauthorization of flood insurance. And then we also monitor several federal issues. Internet cell stacks, connection, which that's been wildly successful for the city, retention of tax-free status of municipal bonds, and then enforcement and compliance with the Clean Air Act and EPA standards, and then issues that affect water and wastewater. So that kind of wraps it up for me, if anybody has any questions.
All right. Any questions or comments for Jane?
Mayor, I have one.
Yeah, go ahead, David.
Jane, thank you for the presentation. And there may not be any additional information that you can provide. I think overall, this is a very nice, a lot of important issues to be addressed. I am concerned about that number one issue from a federal level, continued support engagement regarding the pandemic-related expenses. My understanding is we've received half of what was allotted for this year, and a year from now approximately, another half will be paid. So these comments, unless you wanted to share something in addition to, beyond your presentation, to have that especially listed as the number one priority from a federal perspective just seems perhaps unnecessary currently. Craig, can you tell us what our financial situation is as it relates to the cities?
Our, our, you mean generally, like a general fund?
Yeah.
Our reserves are above the 20%, you know, reserve cap. So our reserves are at a higher level than they've been in the past. We have been engaging to put these programs to work and be able to put funding back out into the community as well as dealing with some city issues, but we're in a very strong position financially right now.
Right. We've even had some record revenue in months.
Oh, yes. Yes. We've had the highest months in the last six months, the highest months of sales tax that we've had in the history of the city.
Personally, I don't believe this administration needs any further encouragement to spend money. And secondly, I don't think we're in a position to where we need any additional funding. If anything, I would encourage them to refocus funds to continued research into the cause and mitigation of the virus, as opposed to sending monies, especially to cities like us. It's, we're asking for money that they don't have and we don't need, basically. So I would ask that, if possible, could we pull this one item and vote on that separately? And then all the others could be voted as a package?
It'd probably be in the form of an amendment, but I do want to clarify, this is, I don't think anybody in the committee interpreted this as to be asking for anything beyond what has already been approved and allocated to Oklahoma City. Are you, are you taking it that way, that we're asking for another bill? Because that is not what that, how this was intended to be.
Then I would question why it's listed as the number one item.
And I think really that's for us to communicate with our delegation what we're doing with the funds, what we're doing with the funding. I would say it's a priority just because, I mean, it's been, we've gotten too much.
I would say there's a tremendous amount of communication constantly occurring between Treasury and, and city management and financial officers around the country about what are the real parameters, what are the rules? Like, that's what, how I took this, is just to maintain those lines of communication.
Keep on top of it, exactly.
Not like asking for anything beyond.
Yeah, I think too, that at one time there was discussion about that second half of the amount that had been committed to the city from the rescue plan funding of possibly being used for other purposes. I think that's fallen by the wayside, but that was another issue, just to make sure we had the assurances that funding would come in. You know, we talked about we're in a good position financially, but we have far more needs than what we can meet. If you look at infrastructure and other needs that the rescue plan funding is allowed to be used for, so I think there's definitely other needs that we have, and we want to be sure that that funding that's been committed, that we do receive that.
Yes. And I do not disagree with the fact that we've got more needs for funds than what we have resources for. But I don't think we should look to the federal government for any further financial assistance. At some point in time, I'd like for us to begin thinking in terms of being self-reliant, self-sustainable, that we can accomplish whatever we need on our own without any additional financial support.
Does it bring you to a higher comfort level to hear us all say that's not what we're asking for here, and that's not how that was intended?
It does. It would make me feel even better if it was reworded to that effect in, in the resolution.
What about David? We take out continued support and engagement regarding, and just insert the word "monitor."
That'd be fine.
Continued monitoring, or engagement's fine, right? I mean, it's the support that bothers you.
Yeah, I just don't, I just want to voice my personal opinion that I don't think we as a city need any additional funding as it relates to COVID. Now, can we always use more money? Yes. I'll make a request to all the citizens out there. If you've got any extra money, send it our way, and we'll find uses for it. But it's almost as if we're cutting and pasting from a year ago. And I would like for us to be a little bit thoughtful.
I think it's not that big a deal. But, but if you would like to move to amend, are you saying maybe say continued engagement regarding pandemic-related expenses and fiscal support for the community, that, that's just basically, I think that's what we intended to say, was that we're just going to continue to stay in touch with Treasury and all related agencies as it, as it pertains to the expenditures of the funds already received or allocated, obviously.
Maybe we could also include the word clarification as to uses of those funds. That may not be necessary. And I'm supportive of that, trying to clarify and getting better direction as to what can those funds be used for. But I certainly don't want to give any impression that we're asking for more money.
Nor was that intended.
I'm sorry.
Yes, James.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we're adding voices to the conversation, I just think, no, I mean, I, we have, and I want to make sure anyone who's watching and is new to this conversation knows, previously on city council, we have received updates on this, this funding repeatedly. Assistant city manager Kenny Soodle has stood there, where Jane stands today. Assistant city manager Aubrey McDermott had stood there. We have received in-depth updates on CARES Act funding, CARES Act II funding, ARPA funding. And as we just heard our city manager say, our city has needs, and by city, we mean the city of OKC as an entity, as well as our people. We can, when I hear the, sorry, it's, I just, I, no, why on God's green earth would we amend language when we're going to do exactly what this language says? We're going to continue supporting and engaging in this conversation with people. We're not just monitoring, we're engaging. We are advocating on behalf of our people and our city as a, as an entity. I just think this is silly season, and I just see no reason. I mean, I'm, I'm kind of, this is, this is disappointing. So no, we shouldn't amend this.
I think we shouldn't make too big of a deal of it.
That's right, we shouldn't.
He thinks that it reads like we want another bill.
It doesn't.
No, it did, that is definitely, you were there at the committee, right, James?
I was there.
You agreed, that's not the intention of the agenda, to ask for another bill. That's not what we're asking for. However, you're reading it that way, David. You feel the word "support" in conjunction with fiscal support later in the, in the same sentence makes that, leaves that impression. That's not the impression we want to leave. I don't have a problem amending it by cutting the, I think, just continued engagement and just move on. I can support that, it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
I don't think, it doesn't change our policy whatsoever. It's a, it's a wordsmithing thing, so. If you want to make that motion.
Yes, I'd like to make that motion.
Okay. Continued engagement, cutting the word "support." Again, this is not a policy change. All right, we have a motion and a second. Cast your votes.
Wait, I'm sorry, what am I voting on?
So you're voting to cut the word "support" from priority issue one, the first use of the word "support," and say, it would say "continued engagement."
I just want to make sure that the people.
It's not a policy change. You can vote, just don't know.
Okay. All right, I'm just saying, y'all, this is funny. This is what this is.
All right. How are we doing? All right, passes five to three. Issue is amended. All right. Any other wordsmithing we need to do? Okay. Any other questions, comments for Jane, on the state or federal agenda?
I have a couple.
Yeah, go ahead.
Questions and concerns pertaining to the state legislative issues. We're going through right now our Human Rights Task Force, and the issue has been raised numerous times from the task force, that we add items pertaining to state legislative issues in order for us to be able to even have power for our Human Rights Commission once it is established. So these are things to prepare for this commission to be able to do the things that they need to do. And I don't see any of these five legislative priorities on our state legislative priorities. So I'm quite curious, at least if nothing, we didn't add enhanced remedies, penalties for discrimination and hate crimes, or the fact that we, number one, asked for its subpoena power pertaining to the Human Rights Commission Task Force, and this was unanimous from our task force. And Councilman, if I'm wrong, please correct me. These were the things that we talked about, and Councilwoman, please let me know, especially from our co-chairs, because again, we understand the keys that need to be, and tools that need to be in place in order for this commission to go forward. And these are also things that we talked heavily with our municipal counselor and talked through with our municipal counselor about in order for us to even look at the opportunities to start the engagement. And while I understand we have not brought that to the vote of our city council to approve, these are things that as a city, we should want, period. Clearly, we have seen the number of penalties for discrimination and hate crimes rise across this country, not just in Oklahoma, across this country. So if anything, that should probably be on federal too, not just state. So I'm just, again, trying to understand why I don't see any of those things that we have truly, I'm going to say the word, fought hard to get, because we understand and know what we have to look at in order for this commission to be successful when it is considered by the city council. And if we just did this just to, just to have something in place to say we did it, fine. I think that needs to be said to the people that we wasted our time for a year. Otherwise, I think these are things that need to be added, one or two, need to be added to our state legislative priorities.
So I think that was the committee's judgment. Obviously, the council as a body can feel differently, but I think it was the committee's judgment until we have actually, as a council, adopted a Human Rights Commission, that it was not time yet to seek potential legislative changes that would enhance their abilities. Obviously, it is legal under state law to have a Human Rights Commission today. The city of Tulsa has one. I understand everything you're saying, and I think those are very legitimate conversations to have, but the committee did not feel it was time yet. There was basically just, that was not the right order of things. But if you feel differently, this is the, as Councilman Greenwell just moved, this is the forum to have that conversation.
Well, I would like to move that we at least add a couple of these legislative priorities that we've asked for from the Human Rights Commission Task Force, because again, this was from, a recommendation from the, from the body. This was a recommendation from, one, from the Policy Committee, and overall, had to be voted on and approved by that task force. So it wasn't just a small body of folks who said we would like these things. This was an overall vote from that body that said, these are the things we would like to be considered, and these are the things that we want in order for a Human Rights Task Force, or, excuse me, a Human Rights Commission, to have the tools that they need in place to ensure that we're protecting our citizens and all of those residents that live within Oklahoma City. To ensure, again, penalties for discrimination, hate crimes, authority to levy fines, authority to compel community service, authority to award restitution and subpoena power. If we can't get all five, there's no reason why we can't add at least two, to start the conversation again for that. So I'm going to move that we add to the state legislative priorities of subpoena power and enhanced remedies, penalties for discrimination and hate crimes.
How can we do that if we don't even have a committee formed? How can we give something power that doesn't exist yet?
Yeah.
Or ask for power for something that doesn't exist?
Yeah, sure. I mean, legally, we can do it, but, but I think you're making a rhetorical argument that you don't feel it's time yet, and that was, that was what the committee had decided. So I mean, I think.
Well, if now's not the time, when is the time?
I'm asking honestly legally, if something doesn't even exist, how can we give it, or ask for it to be given power that it doesn't even exist yet?
We can ask for lots of things.
Yeah, well, it's not specifically just for Oklahoma City, it would be statewide. So the fact that.
But the state already has that power.
But Human Rights Commissions at the city level, the legislative ask is that city, Human Rights Commissions at the city level have that power. So it's not, it wouldn't just be for Oklahoma City, it would be for any Human Rights Commission at a city level. And I think from, I was actually just talking to a legislator later last week about the legislation that went into effect to cap insulin prices. And he mentioned that that, you know, was a years-long process of discussions at the state legislature from advocates and between legislators. And I think to the, to Councilwoman Nys's point, it's like, even if we don't have a Human Rights Commission, I think these are things that this, this task force has recommended and has asked for, and it's part of starting the conversation at the state level. Not that anything specific is going to happen legislatively at the state level, but if we don't start the conversation now, we're going to be behind once we have a commission established. So I will second Councilwoman Nys's motion.
May I also, I'm sorry.
Sure, we have a motion in a second, but if there's further debate.
Well, it's more of a clarification on my part in terms of what I'm here, if I'm hearing this right, and just kind of also to explain my process going into the committee, like, I'm glad you clarified, Councilwoman, about the task force already putting forth some of their recommendations, because otherwise, like, some of the, like, the Community Working Group recommendations, or the Law Enforcement Task Force recommendations, like, we haven't voted to make those recommendations yet. Had we, and when we do, I, I would hope, you know, we'll have like a kind of checklist of things that we'll come back to advocate when it comes to legislative stuff at the, at the state level. So if that's the plan on my part, when I think of the Community Policing Working Group and the Law Enforcement Task Force, when those two bodies make their recommendations together with the consultant, then it does stand to reason that if the Human Rights Task Force has already made recommendations at this state, stage of the conversation, then I think adding them makes sense. So that's how I've arrived at that. If you have questions, let me know. But my second thing.
I got one question.
Oh, please, yeah.
You know, the task force is coming to us to make a presentation on what they've done, the work they've done. And if, I haven't even seen these recommendations, I'd like to take a look at them and study them.
You are on the committee.
I know, I haven't not read them.
And you haven't seen them?
I haven't read them.
We have looked over these how many times? And you weren't at that meeting?
I would like to look at them, I'd like to study them, and I'd like to think about them. I'm against all forms.
That's the unfortunate part, because we have, we have members.
Are you going to let me talk, or are you going to interrupt me?
It's unfortunate that we have members who are wanting to be part of these committees and these task forces and don't show up when it's time to make these types of decisions. That's the unfortunate part of even where we are right now pertaining to this, because you could have been the biggest advocate had you read your email and read it, and then made the decision when we had the meeting for this legislative committee.
I have spent hours and hours looking at this, working on this, but the things that you're proposing is not in front of us, it wasn't in our agenda packet. I'd like to look at it, is all I'm saying.
You have it in your email, it's been in your email for over a month.
Let's stay on task. We have a motion in a second. Can we just vote?
Mayor.
I, oh, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
May I make a comment, please? One, this is trying to provide direction for our lobbyists. We don't even know the details of what we're proposing to provide to the lobbyists, so I, I don't think it's appropriate at this time to include this. And a second comment, Councilman Stonecypher is by far the most prepared member of this council on any issue. It's unbelievable the time he puts involved in all of these issues that come before this council.
I have spent hundreds of hours working on this HRC material. I spent time with Kenny, I spent time with Amanda, I have gone over it in many, many meetings.
But not the committee? Okay, we got it.
Yeah, I wasn't through.
I'm sorry.
Again, Councilman Stonecypher is the most prepared member of this council currently, and over the past 10 years, as far as my involvement here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I did, I was.
All right, real quick.
Earlier, when I was providing those clarifications on the steps forward when it comes to both the, the Law Enforcement Task Force and the Community Policing Task Force as it relates to our legislative agenda, my follow-up to that was the recommendations, if there were five that I heard. were five that I heard, I don't understand why we would just do the two. I guess what I'm saying is, like, I would just like, whatever recommendations that task force has put forward, I'd like to see those and put all of them there. I don't understand why we have to pick and choose, I guess is my--
Well, I'm happy to amend it to say "human rights concerns." I mean, on our federal, there, it says "criminal justice issues." So there's a possibility to put "human rights issues" pertaining to our state and our city.
Well, do you wanna see how this motion goes, and then if you wanna add more after that, if it's--
Yeah, and the other thing I'd say--
Did you amend the motion?
I'm happy to take a look at this--
Point of order?
And consider it at our next meeting.
Point of order for that.
Yes, yes, Councilwoman, what's, which--
My voice doesn't matter. I'm speaking.
I asked for a point of order to clarify what I can amend this motion to in order for this vote.
Okay, we do have a motion on the table. So let me go to Councilwoman Nice, because it's relevant to the motion on the table, and then Mark will address your question. What is your point of order, Councilwoman?
My point, my ask is, with us already in this motion, and it is my motion, is it possible for me to amend the emotion, amend this motion while we are in it to say "human rights issues"?
So, so you listed earlier two issues. Are there, are there more that you would like to, at least--
Where would you like, where would you like to put that?
In the state legislative issues.
Under priority issues?
Under priority--
Under support issues, under monitor issues. Be more specific, please.
I want to put them in all three.
Okay, so we got the five issues. What, what, just summarize them real quick, 'cause you gave a good description of the first two. What are the other three?
The other three include authority to award restitution, authority to compel community service, authority to levy fines, enhanced remedies, penalties for discrimination and hate crimes, and subpoena power. And again, all of the Human Rights Task Force members received all of this information, and it was voted upon in our last meeting.
Okay, got it. And Councilwoman Hammond, I assume you second that revised motion. Councilman Stonecypher, what was your question?
I have no question. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the table to add the five items from relating to the Human Rights Commission--
The wording was "human rights issues."
Yeah, the five human rights issues that have been discussed by the Human Rights Commission Task Force. We got a motion in a second. Cast your votes.
I can't vote. It won't come up.
They're also listed as the second, which I'm pretty sure you're not, but on this motion. I think the second should be Councilwoman Hammond. There we go. Okay. Did you vote, Councilman Stonecypher?
I wish to vote no.
Uh, how do you wish to vote?
I wish to vote no.
Okay. All right, fails three to five. All right, we are back on item four A as amended and four B as it was originally introduced. Any other questions, comments? All right, what do we, what does the council wish to do with item four A, the amended federal legislative agenda? Got a motion and a second?
So this is with the, this is with the language that Councilman Greenwell amended it to earlier?
This was with the one-word cut, yes, yes.
So voting against this makes it seem like we're voting against our legislative agenda?
Correct.
Again, I just wanna clarify toward two. I'm, I'm gonna, I support our legislative agenda, which is why I'm going to vote for this. I, because I know, I know what we're advocating for, for your needs. That's just what I'm gonna say about that, and thanks for the opportunity to do so.
All right, we've got a motion in a second for item four A. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. All right, item four B, this is the resolution adopting the state legislative agenda. We could take a motion on this. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passes seven to one. All right, now we're on item four, and thank you so much, Jane, and everybody on the team. We're item four C and four D, which seem potentially related to each other, so I'm kind of grouping them that way, but that's up to the authors. Item four C is a resolution establishing a redistricting committee to review redistricting maps. This was deferred from October 26th, and then item four D is a resolution requiring the council to add at least two additional wards. The authors of both resolutions are Hammond, Cooper, and Nice, and I will let you all take it from here.
Thank you. I will start, and then, I know we do have a presentation, but just to sort of, since this is a fairly new idea for the city, I'm not aware of us ever having anything like this in the past. This sort of proposal idea came to a few of us through the League of Women Voters and a group called People Not Politicians, who advocates for independent redistricting commissions, to, to draw state, or to draw our district maps with people in mind not protecting incumbency in any way. So we, actually Amanda Carpenter and Kenny Soodle did a presentation with the League of Women Voters, just to educate them about the city's process, and we kind of started that discussion to, to kind of talk about what, what could it look like to have more public input, more direct public input along the process, instead of staff draws maps, maybe we have a few meetings that a handful of people show up to, because we all live very busy lives, and it kind of feels like the map's already drawn, so why show up? Is, is the sense that I have received from, from people in the community. I'll also say, you know, I don't, this is obviously rumor mill, what I'm about to say, I can't verify it in any way, but I think the fact that it is something that exists, like a narrative that exists in the community is problematic, and I think some, a committee like this can help buffer that mistrust of, of our process. But I have spoken with former council members who've been part of the process, where council was broken up into small groups, looked at the maps, and said things like, "Well, I don't do very well in this corner. Can you take that out and move it over here?" And again, whether or not that has actually happened, the fact that it can be a rumor is extremely concerning to me. So, you know, I think, again, and it, the, the final point I'll make is, I, I have the densest ward, the smallest geographic footprint in the city, but I struggle to get to all corners of the ward on a regular basis, especially in the last couple of years with, with the pandemic, being out and about in, in really understanding on what, what things look like on the ground when you move through a community, about what communities of interest have in common. You know, I, I only have a very slim knowledge of that, and I will say that, you know, I think our staff are incredibly competent and thoughtful, but they also don't have that experience. It just, no small group of people that is not incredibly diverse in a variety of ways can have the experience and knowledge of saying, "Yes, it makes sense that these areas have common interests, and, you know, makes sense to be represented by the, the same representative." So from this, that position, you know, we, we try to write it with, and propose it with guardrails against partisanship, 'cause I know there are concerns about that, and so, you know, trying to make sure that appointees would not, have not been lobbyists, members of, officers, I should say, of any kind of partisan party structure, or federal or state elected representatives of a partisan body, to guard against that, to truly have community members who represent that geography of the ward. Because again, even for a ward like mine, that is incredibly small geographically, square footage-wise, it's hard to fully understand and know, because I just don't move through the ward in the same way that a group of people that could help give that advice, provide that input along the process, rather than just sort of at the end, when it kind of maybe feels like everything's all said and done. So that's my piece. I don't know if the other authors have any comments to make, but then we will have a presentation from staff.
I'll just make a few comments. First, representation matters. If we have grown in such a size for our city, then our city council should say such as far as representation. I will also say that in 1966 is when we last had more wards than four, and it was because of that there became a ward seven. That was the last time. So I think this process is time. If we're truly going to be this one OKC we keep claiming we wanna be and strive to be, it takes these types of bold initiatives and steps to ensure that we are not falling into the same footprint that our federal legislators are doing.
Yeah, I'll just say, as I've spoken previously on just my views when it comes to the redistricting process generally, it's just my strong, and I think I've spoken both from this horseshoe, and I think in private with several of you, like, I just have a preference where, as an elected official, I would not be the one drawing boundaries where I represent. I really like the idea of, and that's not what we're proposing here. I just want it stated that that's where I come from. I just really like the idea of something independent, adding to the fact that we are a nonpartisan body. That's why I love representing on city councils, is that nonpartisanship, and the possibility therein. So since that's not the reality facing us, I do then like the idea of representatives across Ward Two, from all the, its different corners, being able to add their voice in this way that the resolution is, is creating. I just, I love that transparency and oversight, and that's why I'm supporting this particular resolution. And that's all I have to say about that.
Hi, Amanda Carpenter, Deputy Municipal Councillor. I am just gonna go over what the details are that are in this resolution, that provide the makeup and the process for the redistricting committee if this resolution is approved. So the duties and process, this subcommittee, or this committee, would be required to review the maps that are provided by city staff, using the criteria that was previously approved in the resolution previously provided and moved by Councilman Stonecypher. They would develop the recommendations on where the ward maps meet, what the lines are, and then that recommendation would go to council before its final consideration of the maps and the ordinance developing the new wards in April of 2022. The committee members would be appointed by the mayor after input from council members. Currently, the resolution states that there would be four representatives from each of the eight current wards. The chosen representatives would represent the geography of that ward, meaning the different areas, the different neighborhoods. The member qualifications, which Councilwoman Hammond explained very succinctly, no previous partisan, partisan elected official lobbyist, a member of a political party, staff member of a political party, candidate for elective office, or employee or paid consultant of the state or US Congress. And then some information that was provided to our office, that is for your information, is there are other cities who have used committees, San Jose, California, Bloomington, Indiana, Kansas City, Missouri. Some of these are required by charter. Some are, are selected, and, and the legislative body of those groups have chosen to use committees. They are varying sizes of cities. I'm available to answer any questions that you might have about that resolution.
Any questions or comments? All right, then. Councilman Greenwell?
Well, I guess we're getting close to the voting.
Mm-hmm. Here we appear, so.
Can, can I show the city map? Amy, since you were so nice last meeting, to put something up there. Would you be able to show the city map by ward? You know, we've got a map on our, on our website.
If you Google OKC ward map, I do this three times a day, you can get the map.
Yeah, could we focus on Ward Five?
Sir, wait a, I think he wants everyone to see that.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm here.
Okay.
Yeah, could we pull it up and just kind of broaden Ward Five? It's, it's that yellow one here. Right, that one right there, that gold one. Okay, so if we may, just to go over quickly, mainly for those who are in the audience, as well as who may be watching us, Ward Five, to go over the process that we've been using, and at this point, plan to use. First of all, there's just less than 10 steps. We get the estimated population of the city of Oklahoma City. We divide that number by eight. We compare the estimated population by ward to that average divided by eight. And then, for example, like Ward Five, if my population as estimated is less than what the total estimated is divided by eight, if mine is less, then I have to grow, increase my ward area to, to obtain the additional population. For example, let's say I currently have 70,000, and I need to get to 75. I've got to increase my area to gain that 75. Now, you'll see that the southern section of Ward Five is the city's southern boundary. We connect to the city of Norman. The east boundary, for the most part, I pick up a little bit in terms of a shared boundary with Ward Four, but for the most part, it's the city of Moore, so I have no way of working in, in those two areas. On the west side is Interstate 44, which serves as a nat, a nat, a nice, not a natural, but a nice boundary with basically Ward Three. Bradley, you don't go out to, that's all Ward Three, yeah. And so really, all I have to deal with is the northern boundary. So if my population is greater, and I have to shrink it, that shrinkage will come on the north side of Ward Five's boundary, which is basically three miles, you know, there's not much area. And if I need to increase it, I could draw from either Ward Four, Ward Six, or Ward Three. And we just adjust those boundaries to adjust the estimated population within the boundary. It's a very simple process, less than six steps, and for Ward Five, it takes very little time. The maps that we have to work with, when you change the boundaries, change the total population. I mean, I don't know how they do that. It's computerized. But they can pretty well tell you where you can go to achieve the additional population, if you need additional population, or help you identify which areas you could shrink to give up population. It, it's a very easy process, and then, once you've got to that point, then it's just a matter of discussing with the adjoining council members which areas would they like to give up or take. And again, it's a very simple process. There's no hidden agenda on this. There's been, I've never heard of any efforts to eliminate any sector of population or anything like that. It's basically, we're all connected. You either grow, expand the area, or shrink it to accommodate the average population. It's a very simple process. And so that's all I wanted to point out. So thank you, Mayor, and Amy, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, by the way, we do have one person who signed up to speak, although specifically to item D, so maybe we'll handle C first and then hear from that person. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, the one thing I wanna say is, I've had the benefit of talking to several people, including Mayor Norick, Jim Couch, Debbie Martin, and others. I've had the benefit of serving on the Charter Ad Hoc Committee, two of them, that look at this issue. And the one thing that's become crystal clear in my conversations is that this is a system that's been in place since, back to 1990. And it's worked, and it's worked well, and if it's not broke, I don't think we need to tinker with it, or fix it, or change it. It's worked for our city. It's a good thing for our city. I'm not willing to abdicate my responsibility and my obligations to play a part of this process, especially when I look and see the problems they had in, in Norman, Oklahoma, where they had one of these committees. So I'll be voting against the resolution. Thank you. So, I'll be voting against the resolution. Thank you.
I guess my last comment, and I'll make a motion, is, okay, we have two people of color on this council. How many people of color will be part of our staff who do this? I'm not sure. Nope, none of us speak another language, to my knowledge. None of us live in south-central Oklahoma City. This process has worked. When I hear things like that, or when I hear things like, "This is a simple process," I always have to think, "Work for who?" And when we look at what's happening at the state level with our congressional district proposed maps, I see the Latinx population of South Oklahoma City, and honestly, anyone who lives in South Oklahoma City, but particularly a growing Latinx population having their voices minimized, discarded, and just disregarded completely. And to the point of, "Well, we just have to move this to do this," and it's, my ward, I have a, I have a few highways in my ward that aren't just a natural boundary, so it doesn't make sense to me that we couldn't have more people involved in thinking about, "How do people move through these spaces, and what are those communities of interest?" That also, of course, we need to consider just numbers, but just saying, "Oh, well, there's a natural boundary here, and there's a natural boundary there," isn't the whole conversation. And again, I think, to Councilwoman's point about wanting to be hashtag one OKC, if we aren't actually bringing people into the process and providing transparency and accountability, again, the fact that those rumors exist, and that distrust exists, is a problem, regardless of whether it has happened or not. And having more folks that are living, working, supporting their families, moving throughout these spaces in a different way than any of us do, and any of the staff who will be working on this process do, to me, does nothing but improve the quality of representation and access, transparency, accountability to this government body. So, with that, I'll make a motion to, to pass this resolution.
Item 4C.
4C, yes.
Mayor, I do want to add one more thing, since Councilman Greenwell pulled up the map, because it helps me, can y'all hear me well? It helps, it helps me be able to clarify my position on this resolution and why I'm advocating for it. So, Councilman Greenwell, for me, the moment, like, I respect a lot of our process, particularly as it relates to the computer software that will be crafting the lines, for instance. I like that, because it's removing me from it. I really appreciate that part. It's the moment in the process where, once we realize that new boundaries need to come into existence, that's the moment where, rather than me as the elected official, looking at that, whatever the map, whatever map comes from that software, it's the moment where I like an organization like League of Women Voters, which I just want to read, like, what they do, right? They encourage and form an active participation in government. They work to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and influence public policy through education and advocacy. They want more people engaged in the democracy, and I think that moment of, let's say, the computer crafts, here's what the possible new maps are, I think having nonpartisan residents representing, you know, kind of a four corners of a ward, being able to say, "Okay, well, now that we know that things need to shift, what about this, what about this?" I think that just gives more voice to the conversation. That's the, that's the moment I'm asking for, before it would ever, if the council person's still going to be involved in it, I'd rather go through many more steps before it ever got to me, where I can just look and be like, "Cool, that's great, let's go, let's move forward." That's what I'm asking for, is just more resident engagement in that process, more awareness of the process itself. And then ultimately, I just believe that through engagement in that particular process, what will come from it will be residents better understanding than, "Oh, well, here's how I can advocate on public policy issues that matter to my ward. Maybe I didn't know as much as a resident about the north part of my ward is what the needs are on the south part, but by participating on this panel, now I do." And I find that's been conversations I've had generally with residents in the ward, where they didn't know about stuff facing maybe northwest 122nd, but then when I talked to the people down at 23rd, they're like, "Oh, wow, that's a good point, I hadn't thought about that." And then we're able to kind of build coalitions and work better together in that way. So, that's why I've arrived at this position of supporting this. I just think the more voices in that conversation, the stronger the product ultimately, the product being a working government. So, just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second on Item 4C. Cast your votes. Fails three to five. And now, we're on Item 4D. Is there anything the authors wish to say, or do you want me to call up the resident who signed up to speak?
We do have a short presentation about this one to kind of just walk through sort of the reasoning behind this proposal. I think what I'll say is, Councilwoman Nice mentioned this process hasn't been revisited, or hasn't been implemented or changed since the, how did you say, 60s?
1966. And the only reason we had representation for Ward Seven of African-American descent was because the council member passed away.
And I think, again, going back to my point about the growing Latinx population in the city, like, it pains me to realize how disregarded the south part of my ward is. Like, I do my best to connect with folks there, but I, when I was knocking doors on the south side of my ward, I talked to people over and over and over again, who said nobody from the city had ever come and talked to them when they were running for office, because they didn't matter. Their votes didn't matter to people in the past. And recognizing that this city has grown, this has been a conversation since I was born, and probably before that, the city has grown so much since that first conversation that we were able to find in 1990, I think it's time for us to recognize that we are a growing city, and we need better and closer representation, and more representative representation for the residents of the city to have more active participants in our governing of the direction of the city. So, if the other authors have nothing to say right now, I'll ask Jane to, for this presentation.
Great. Hello, Jane Abraham, Community and Government Affairs Manager. And so, one of the different responsibilities that I have is to work on the redistricting process, and I've done that over the last, well, just the last cycle in 2011 was my first cycle that I got to work on the redistricting process. But throughout that, we've also had the conversation about the 10 ward expansion, and that was brought forward by Councilman White several years ago. So, anyway, I'm just going to kind of go through a history that just talks about some of the different things. Oh, this is really small. So, yes, as you said, in 1966 was when the city was divided into eight wards. Prior to that, it was in four wards, and it essentially stayed that way. They did like a brief experiment where there were two members per ward when it was still four, but then that only lasted for like a year. And they went back to having four until 1966, when the city was divided into eight wards. And then during the 50s and 60s, of course, the city, Oklahoma City annexed a significant amount of land, and that expanded the city limits to the current configuration. So, the expansion of number of wards has been considered over the past several years. In 1990, a committee was established to look at expanding to 12 wards. And then in 2006, research was conducted on the history of number and size, and presented to council. And then in 2014, city council actually held a special meeting to discuss the potential to have 10 wards. And then in 2008, most recently in 2018, a group of citizens approached city council about expanding. And then the research on peer cities was conducted at that time. And so, this just shows the population growth that we've had since 1970, and just the different, you know, percent changes over time. And we've, yeah, we've obviously increased our population. And then, most recently, we went up 17.4% between 2010 and 2020. And then this is the peer city analysis, so this, similar to what was done in 2018, but just updated with the 2020 census numbers, to just look at and see, like, among our peer cities, the number of counselors that they have in their population, and sort of the number of people represented by each counselor. And then also, the square mileage for each of these peer cities. So, that's really all I have. I don't have any additional information.
Happy to answer any questions. Can we hear from whoever signed up?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, from whoever signed up.
Okay. Sam Worgen-Gremaldo, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address, and keep your remarks to three minutes or less.
Before I get started, would it be possible to pull the map of the city wards up again? I think it'd be helpful for illustrative purposes. My name is Sam Worgen-Gremaldo. I am a resident of Capitol Hill in Ward Four, and I live at 400 Southwest 26th Street. I've spent most of my life living in South Oklahoma City. I've not been able to make it to many council meetings, for many reasons, mostly to do with access, having these meetings happen during the workday, but that's an issue for another resolution, hopefully, in the future. The one city, the first city council meeting I actually made it to was a little over 10 years ago, and the significant agenda item that day was the issue of redistricting and adding more wards to our city council. I heard some discouraging words that day, and obviously, the resulting vote was to keep the council at eight wards. One of the reasons stated by a former council member for not expanding the council was that it would require a complete reorganization of the horseshoe where you all are currently seated, that you'd have to add more chairs up there, and the requisite remodeling would be too much trouble. Thankfully, the conversation on redistricting has evolved from that time. At least, I hope it has. I hope that the thoughts that you ponder as you vote on this resolution go beyond how you personally may be inconvenienced, and that you can see this is an opportunity to create a more unified Oklahoma City. At this point in our city's growth, the conversation about redistricting our wards, and the potential to add at least two more, is a conversation about access, representation, and inclusion. As a lifelong resident of the south side, I know personally the feeling of being a part of the city that all too often seems to be forgotten or ignored. As a volunteer and former candidate for elected office, I've had the privilege of knocking on hundreds of doors personally, and hearing fellow southerners echo that feeling. I'll give credit to the increased and long overdue attention the south side is starting to receive from a few of you up there. You've shown an unprecedented interest in making sure we enjoy increased public investment at the city level, but the bar for that was set pretty low. We need more than kind words and photo opportunities, we need accurate representation. If you look at the ward map, as it's presented here, you'll see that the inner-city core of South Oklahoma City framed by the highways, as Councilmember Greenwell alluded to earlier, though I found it interesting that 240 doesn't serve as a natural boundary, but I-44 does. If you look at that area, the inner-city core of South Oklahoma City, you see that it is split between five of the eight wards that make up the council. I grew up and lived and worked in the area all of my life, and it is undoubtedly what would be considered a community of interest that should share political representation at the city level. We are a largely working-class, multicultural area with a substantial immigrant background population, and we share many of the same interests and concerns when it comes to how the city we call home develops now and in the future. Yet, our civic voices, our votes, are divided up between five wards, effectively diluting and disenfranchising our voting power. If you decide against the opportunity to add more wards to the city council, you're deciding to uphold that disenfranchisement. The geography of our city makes any other reality nearly impossible. You would be foreclosing on an opportunity to encourage more residents of our city in the processes and investments that our tax dollars fund, and you would continue to rob communities of their collective voice. I encourage you to vote to support the resolution, to add at least two more wards to our council, and to make every effort to include citizen voices in the redistricting conversations going forward. And I know this is a continuing conversation that we will have, and so I hope that you make those efforts. And I hope that the redistricting process expands beyond just what is convenient for the current status quo, that you take into account the real effects on real people that live in our city. And I commend the authors of these resolutions for putting these efforts forward, and I hope that you will seriously consider the words and the experiences that I'm sharing with you today. Thank you.
Mayor, if I might quickly just say, Sam, I appreciate your words on that. And as far as the heart of South Oklahoma City being divvied up between five wards, I totally agree with you. Now, I won't support the resolution because it's a requirement, and it's a requirement that I haven't even seen yet what the growth in the different wards looks like. But you can believe that I will champion that opportunity, and I still want to see what it looks like with two additional wards, but I don't believe in making it a requirement yet, when I've yet to seen a map or the numbers or anything else. So, but I appreciate you coming down and talking. Totally agree with you on that. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments or questions? And if not, we can proceed.
I would just say, somewhat similar to what Councilman Stone just said, like, I'm not sure it is two. Like, you know what I mean? Like, we haven't seen, yeah, it really could be four. I don't know. And that's, again, where I'm really looking forward to seeing what the, this kind of computer software helps us understand about what's possible. I just know in my, I just know that we need more wards, because the people need more representation. I just know it, and I feel like two is a good starting place for that conversation. I do take you seriously, Todd, when you say that this is something worth revisiting, when we have a better look at those numbers, though. So, I just, I just want to say that. And I would also just point out to people who are watching this, that a state House of Representative member represents a dramatically smaller amount of population than we do on city council. And, and this position is a, is a part-time position, and I think, and pays $12,000 a year. So, like, I literally, as I've said previously, left my job as a middle school teacher the year of the teacher walkout, where we finally got a, I think it was like a $6,000 raise, but I dropped back, I mean, I'm making like $31,000, which is cobbling together a council job with my other love, teaching at the two adjunct jobs that I do at UCO and OCU. The position itself, serving on city council, it's a, it's a difficult one in terms of just even access to the position itself. Like, you really, you'd either have to have been someone like me, who can pull together the different jobs to make that income work, and not really care about, you know, materialism, because I just don't, or you'd have to be independently wealthy. Like, that's the truth of serving in this sort of role. Or at least, upper-middle class, like, I, that's, you would have to. And that's been the history of it. So, I just think that we need to really think about how we can better represent our people. That's why I was so excited when I went out there and knocked all the doors that I did, so I got to talk to as many people as I did, got to hear as many of their voices as I did. I can't wait to do it again. But I just think that we need more wards to kind of add to that representation possibilities. And I do think it would be an interesting thing to see this role become a full-time job. I would love to be, I mean, in a lot of ways, I am, with the work I do. I would love for that to be a possibility. I think that would be great. I think there'd be more access for the people in that sort of way. So, just putting that out there.
And I'll, I'll add to that conversation of what he just said, as far as us having our state legislators who serve so many pieces, or smaller pieces of our footprint. And specifically, I speak to Ward Seven because of our cities, and we hear, we have heard it all the time, we heard it last week, how many major cities fit into Oklahoma City as a city. My footprint of 130 square miles, you can fit Atlanta, Georgia, you can fit Detroit, Michigan, and you can fit Las Vegas, Nevada, in Ward Seven. And I have seven senators and nine representatives that all represent a piece of Ward Seven. So, those are a lot of people I'll have to talk to, depending on what those issues are. While I don't mind doing that, I can't speak to all of the issues that happen in rural parts. parts of our ward because I don't live in the rural part of the ward. I can speak to them all day long and advocate on their behalf, but that's what I say when I say representation matters. I don't mean by color. I mean by footprint, by situations, by circumstances, by social status, by everything that encompasses the people that represent our city. We do not have that representation on this council. And it would be nice to have it and for us to be inclusive in that effort instead of saying, oh, we did that in 1966. What else changed since 1966? Quite a few different things. So I think we can do better by our city in that process.
Okay.
Just a quick comment.
Yeah.
I went and did some research looking at the National League of Cities information on council size, and councils range from anywhere from five council members to 51, but the national average is six. And when I started looking at cities that are either our size or larger, you have these cities with either seven or eight council members. Bakersfield, California, Columbus, Ohio, Detroit, Michigan, El Paso, Texas, Omaha, Nebraska, Phoenix, Arizona, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, and Raleigh, North Carolina. So the average in these cities is either seven members or eight members. And I think the important thing is, in my visits with Mayor Norick, he said that while he was on the council and that while he was mayor, they looked at this issue several times and an expansion would not be good for a multitude of reasons, and therefore I'm not going to support this. Thank you.
And I also want to make mention, as we talk about National League of Cities, we have to also remember they don't encompass just cities of our size. They, they encompass towns and different counties that have smaller footprints. So yeah, your average is not going to look the same when you're looking at the average size of our city and being a part of a couple of those meetings that we've been to in DC and also going to the events that have been held across the nation and understanding how small a lot of those other areas are that have smaller representation. Yeah, it's going to look quite different.
Well, I have lots more to say, but I just will make a motion to approve.
All right. We've got a motion on item 4D. And is there a second? There is. Cast your votes as soon as you have that opportunity. I'm sorry, which one? Eight? Councilman, have you had the chance to vote?
I can't vote. I'm voting nay.
Okay. You're not stuck on presentation, are you? Sometimes that happens to me. Okay. He wishes to vote nay, fails three to five. All right. Now we're on item five, city manager reports. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We have a quick presentation here on the upcoming events for downtown in December with Fee Nguyen with the Downtown OKC, Inc.
Holidays get here earlier every year and there's nothing wrong with that.
We're excited for the holidays this year. Thank you. Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, and Council for having us here today. My name is Fee Nguyen and I'm the Director of Finance at Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership. I'm joined here today with my colleague Holly Hoiler, who is the Events and Development Manager at DOKC. Today, we have the privilege of sharing with you this upcoming season, the 20th anniversary of Downtown in December. Downtown in December began in 2001 with just a handful of events and has grown and evolved over the years very much like our city has. We are thrilled this year to celebrate the 20th anniversary of Downtown in December presented by Devon, and we look forward to it being bigger and brighter than ever. This series is produced by our organization, Downtown Oklahoma City Partnership, with generous support from Devon Energy and the Downtown Oklahoma City Business Improvement District. As well, we also have sponsorships from corporate partners. Downtown in December is presented by Devon and is a collection of over 30 holiday events and attractions taking place in and around downtown. The event series provides a central location for residents and visitors to discover Oklahoma City's signature events as well as numerous other community events put on by nonprofits and businesses. Thank you. Now I'll go through all of the events. Our first one we're super excited to bring back is the Oklahoma City Tree Lighting Festival. This event is returning in person this year to Bricktown. It is located on Mickey Mantle Avenue with the Bricktown Christmas Tree. We are so proud to partner with the city and the mayor for this event where we showcase talented and diverse performances throughout the season. We have family-friendly activities, including free photos with Santa Claus. In addition, we have our annual tradition of the countdown of the lighting of the Bricktown Christmas Tree with Mayor Holt. Last year, in response to the pandemic, we decided to shift the tree lighting to virtual, and this year we're excited to bring back the in-person component while keeping the virtual holiday special, which allowed us greater reach to overall Oklahoma City and the state. Oklahoma City Tree Lighting Festival continues to be the kickoff to downtown, this year occurring in person the Thursday before Thanksgiving. The next event we have on our lineup is Lights on Broadway, a transition we made last year. It used to be a one-day holiday celebration in Automobile Alley, which was an open house for all the businesses that's there, and we really featured the light curtains, which is a holiday destination in Oklahoma City. Last year with the pandemic, we decided to expand it to four Saturdays, allowing more of the community more opportunities to come enjoy it. And this year, we're excited to continue that tradition with four Saturdays, beginning the Saturday before Thanksgiving through December 11th. It is an open house, and we're thrilled to bring back Snow Globe Santa, who became viral last year. He's in a holiday snow globe, and we welcome families to come take photos with him for free. The next event we have is the Saint Santa Run. Last year was the first year for the Santa Run to be in Midtown, but unfortunately, we had to make it virtual. This year, we're excited to bring it to Midtown. We'll use the route we used for the downtown dash previously, and in our partnership with Saints St. Anthony's, we are excited to bring all the programming to their campus. We have lots of runs that day, including a free kids' dash, a one-mile fun run, and a 5K. We also have cash prizes for the fastest runners and the most festive costumes. This year, we are bringing back a Dog Day in December, and that's a holiday event in Midtown where we welcome the community to come and bring their pets, all dressed up to take photos with Santa Claus. It is a fundraiser for Midtown OKC. We'll have programming and snacks available, and the whole community is invited to come out. Even if you don't have a dog, I encourage you to attend because it's really fun to see everyone there with their pets. Merry Midtown is also another Midtown program that we launched last year. It is a holiday marketing campaign which invites the community to come into Midtown. We, the businesses there, restaurants, retailers, have a bunch of promotional items occurring at that time, just welcoming the community in, and it's very festive because the Merry Midtown branding is all about red bows and holiday cheer during the season. One of the most beloved Downtown in December events returns this year, and that is the Devon Ice Rink. The tentative start date is still in the air as they've encountered some technical difficulties, but it will be returning for the 10th season. It's open seven days a week, and it is absolutely Downtown in December's premier attraction located in the heart of downtown in the Myriad Gardens. As mentioned, there's over 30 events, more than I can share with you today, but we have all of this information available on our Nifty website at downtownindecember.com. One of the attractions that we're super excited to launch this year is our Santa Tracker. I think that's a question that everybody has during the holidays, when can I see Santa? So if you simply go to our website, downtownindecember.com, or in any of our promotional items, you'll see a QR code for Find Santa. You can see where he'll be throughout downtown. And oftentimes, these opportunities are free to see Santa, and some of them include free photo opportunities also. Finally, as mentioned, this is the 20th year, and we're so excited to have the community come gather in downtown again. And a lot of these organizations, including ours, are taking extra precautions to make sure that the activities this year remain safe and accessible to the community. Please visit downtownindecember.com for any additional information, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Fee. And I can't believe I'm going to light the Christmas tree next week, so I'm looking forward to that.
We purposefully waited for Halloween to pass and then installation literally happened two days later.
You had to wait for Halloween. You felt like that was... Okay, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, the only other item that we have on is the hotel tax report. Hotel tax has been very strong. We're at about 68% growth. When you look back to last fiscal year at this time, we're still about 7% above that, so really looking strong with hotel taxes.
So like, how would you compare, you know, we always like to go back to 19 and just throw 20 out, so I hear you say six.
That's where we're about 7% over.
7% above this same period before the pandemic.
That's right.
That's pretty amazing. Okay. Okay. Anything else?
And that's all I have.
All right. Item six, Journal of Council Proceedings. Items A and B we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item seven, requests for uncontested continuances. All right, we have a few items already listed on the agenda, so item 11C will be deferred to December 7th. Item 11E will be struck. Item 11F will be deferred to December 7th. Item 11G will be struck. Item 11V will be deferred to January 18th, 2022. Any other items, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, we have several, starting on page 13, item 11Q1 on dilapidated structures. All the items here are stricken. This is, just item A is 316 North Allen Street, the owner has removed. Then on page 14, item 11R1, unsecured structures, all these items are stricken, starting with item A, 316 North Allen Street, the owner has removed, or has secured. Item B, 1032 Southwest Brinkley Street, the owner has secured. Item E, 2401 North Classen Boulevard, the owner has secured. Item G, 1110 Linwood Boulevard, the owner has secured. Item L, 3521 Northwest 11th Street, the owner has secured. Item P, 301 Northwest 25th Street, the owner has secured. Item U, 930 Southwest 29th Street, the owner has secured. And then item V, 2632 Southwest 30th Street, the owner has secured. Item Z, 6200 Southeast 46th Street, the owner has secured. And item AD, 7801 Northwest 94th Street, the owner has secured. On page 15, item 11S1, abandoned buildings, all these items are stricken from the agenda. Item A, 1032 Southwest Brinkley Street, owner has secured. Item C, 2401 North Classen Boulevard, the owner has secured. Item E, 1110 Linwood Boulevard, the owner has secured. Item J, 3521 Northwest 11th Street, the owner has secured. Item N, 301 Northwest 25th Street, the owner has secured. Item P, 930 Southwest 29th Street, the owner has secured. Item Q, 2632 Southwest 30th Street, the owner has secured. And item Y, 7801 Northwest 94th Street, the owner has secured. That's all the items that I have.
All right. Thank you. Without objection, that will be the order. All right. Number eight, revocable permits and events. Item A is a resolution designating the following dates as free fishing days in Oklahoma City. And I'll just reference the dates listed on the agenda. No one has signed up to speak. And it's in every single ward, so we'll just take a motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8B, revocable permit with the River Sport Foundation for the Holiday River Parade, December 4th. We do have someone who's signed up to speak, Megan Duffy.
Megan Duffy, 17014 Valley Lane, Edmond. This is River Sport's first year presenting this event. We're honored to pick up where Mike McCullough left off and continue this tradition in his legacy. The Holiday River Parade will be December 4th, Saturday, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Skiing, Santa, and then his elves will be back, and they will kick off the event at 6:00 p.m. with a ski show. Following that, we'll move into the river parade. Motorboats from around the local area and a few local entities, along with our coaching launches, will be decorated in festive holiday themes, and they will parade along the river in front of the boathouse district. Patrons and families will also have the opportunity to engage in some of our winter glow activities, which will include an indoor ice skating rink, curling, skiing and snowboarding, and pictures and storytime with Santa. There'll be a laser light show projected in the background throughout the evening, and of course, we'll end everything with fireworks over the river.
All right. Councilwoman Nice?
Always my favorite part, when I hear fireworks. I'm actually very excited that you all are bringing this back. I think we had a year off, if I'm not mistaken, last year, but this is now one of, this is one of my favorite times to be on the river, to see all of the boats and all of the lights. And if you have not seen it, you definitely want to be there. And I guess now, since you can ski OKC indoors, that's a great addition to this, too. So with that, I will move for approval.
Just one brief comment. The Holiday River Parade is something that I think Mike McCullough started and ran year after year, and we lost Mike to COVID this past year. And I want to thank you for keeping this alive and keeping it going, and I know his family and friends would be very honored and proud that you are carrying this tradition forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a motion in a second. Passed unanimously. Okay, now we're going to recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, where we have items A through E, we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second, and we cast votes so fast I didn't even vote, but I would like to. You'll revise that? Okay, thank you. Passed unanimously. All right, we'll adjourn OC-MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, where we have items A through A and B, we can take with one motion. Got a motion in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Now we'll adjourn OCPPA and reconvene as the council, where we find ourselves on page three of your printed agenda, item nine, the consent docket. And we have scheduled presentations for BI, BK, and BV. Is there any other item that a council member wishes to pull out for a separate comment or a separate vote?
Yes, I would like to pull, or I need to pull AF for a separate vote and recuse myself because either my primary source of employment is part of that grant. And then I just wanted to see if staff could maybe speak to items Y through AE, just to get some more information about those.
Y through AE?
AE, yeah, Y through AE.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, item BU.
BU?
And I think that's it for me.
Got some? Nope. Okay, all right. Why don't we do the separate vote first, just to handle that? And so that's item 9AF. There's no presentation on it, but if someone would like to make a motion, we can handle that vote. Got a motion in a second. Passed unanimously. Okay. Now back on the consent docket, we'll take them in order. Councilwoman Nice wanted to hear about Y through AE.
That was actually Councilwoman Hammond.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, Councilwoman Hammond, who is back, would like to hear about items Y through AE.
Well, T.O. Bowman, State Building Office Department, to speak on item Y. This is a routine grant application to ACOG for congestion mitigation, air quality money. The project is on Linwood from Chertel to Indiana, and I believe there'll be, the money will be spent for bike lanes and all of the bike infrastructure aspects of the project. And I believe the money will be spent for bike lanes and all of the bike infrastructure aspects of the project.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm excited. The staff had asked for a letter of support, I suppose, to ACOG. And just excited to see that, working to have our funds go farther, hopefully, and in partnering with some air quality improvement grants. So appreciate it.
Okay, and that covered, that brief comment covered all those items?
That was just Y.
Oh.
So now through Z through AE, Eric and Jeff can speak to this.
Okay, got it.
Thank you, Councilor Quinger, Public Works Director for Oklahoma City. So the next six items, which is Z through AE, are all part of our ACOG grant application process. And so this is that one time every other year that we get the opportunity to look at projects. Public works and planning work very closely together. We have a scoring system. And so these are the top scoring projects that we're recommending. Each of them is actually a project as a part of another program. So as we go through each of these, you'll find that they're either funded from the 2017 bond program, or you'll find that they're funded from the Better Street Safer City Sales Tax Program. I think each of the projects you probably have some information on. But these are the projects are also ones that we're hoping to increase the scope of work to do more. So if awarded with this grant, and we won't know until February of 2022 whether we're going to be awarded, that'll be the time where we can make the decision on the individual projects, if we can enhance the scope or if we'll build it with just the funds that are currently available with Oklahoma City. Jeff has also got specifics that we can answer any of the questions you have about the items. Again, they're very joint projects between the two departments.
No, I just appreciate that. I had some folks reach out and just ask if we could highlight those. And I think it's a really great example of the opportunity, again, to partner with other funds from other levels of government and hopefully make our funds go further across the city. So it's exciting to see that and look forward to hearing the results in a few months. So appreciate it.
And that's really a good point, that staff does work very hard together to try to identify projects, whether it's working within other community or projects that we have that can be funded that have these potential to be able to access those funds from ACOG.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a scheduled presentation at BI. This is the joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust, allocating $400,000 to US Auto Force.
Yes, James Finland is here with us this morning with US Auto Force. This project was actually, the resolution has already been approved by the Economic Development Trust and now it's becoming, coming before the council for a $400,000 allocation of GOAL funds for this project to bring some jobs to Oklahoma City.
Mayor Holt, members of the council, thank you for having me here today. I'd also like to thank city officials and staff as well. My name is James Finland. I'm the Director of Planning and Strategic Growth Management for US Auto Force, a division of US Venture. US Venture is one of the largest privately held businesses in the state of Wisconsin, been in operation for over 70 years. Our vision there is that we will be the very best provider, excuse me, of transportation products and insight moving the world forward. But today, we're here to talk about US Auto Force as to build a potential distribution center here in the Oklahoma City market and a strategic investment program. A little bit about our history, founded in 1951 by the Schmidt Brothers. We were founded as Schmidt Brothers Oil. US Auto Force was founded later in the 1950s as Schmidt Tire and Exhaust and officially became US Auto Force in the late 2000s. In 2018, major milestone for us is that we acquired Tyers Warehouse, expanding our footprint to the west. And just recently, in early October of this year, we acquired Treadmax, which expanded our footprint to the southeast United States. Our family of brands spanned seven different divisions at US Venture, from US Oil to Breakthrough Fuels. Our success, though, is shaped by our differentiating values of caring relationships. Excuse me. Caring relationships, entrepreneurial spirit, high performance and strategic foresight. Our true success, though, is really our people. We live for the pursuit of bold ideas, making a positive impact and achieving our full potential. Truly, I truly mean it when I said that US Venture aims to, our work inspires us to change the world. US Auto Force, our tires division, is aim, aim is to be the very best distributor of tires, parts and lubricants in the North American aftermarket. We offer a unique combination of extensive inventories of all leading brands, something our competitors cannot say, with strategically placed distribution centers across the United States, value-added marketing programs and technical training to drive sales for our customers. Here you see an overview of our market. Right now, we occupy 30 different states, excuse me, 32 different states with 50 distribution centers across the United States, highlighted by our most recent acquisition in the southeast. The Oklahoma City project background is pretty simple. Here's an overview of what a warehouse for us would look like. Our typical specification for greenfield growth is that the warehouse would be approximately 130,000 square feet, built upon 10 to 15 acre site that would employ more than 40 people. Oklahoma City is a potential expansion area for us that we're excited about, that could serve all of Oklahoma and adjacent markets. And Oklahoma City is strategically located for that, based on your growth in both in population and in economic growth. While we are currently evaluating more than a dozen other markets across the United States, we are closing in on four different sites in Oklahoma City. The project, as I mentioned, would be 40 jobs over a three to five-year period. Our average wage for those position exceeds $55,000 a year. Those positions range from management, operations, sales leaders, material handlers, delivery drivers, administrative staff. We provide comprehensive health benefits to all of our employees on day one of employment, and that package exceeds annually $11,000 per year. The incentives that the program provides makes market entry for us easier and eliminates some capital barriers that we currently see in greenfield development. If approved, we would tentatively begin hiring in the second quarter of 2022, with full hiring beginning in the third quarter of next year. Locally and globally at US Venture, we're actively engaged in our differentiating value of caring relationships. Through the US Venture Schmidt Family Foundation, we are committed to challenging ourselves to address the causes of root poverty, improve the quality of life everywhere we work. We do that globally by partnering with Vicodec, a school in Nairobi, Kenya. We do that locally by partnering with associates at all of our locations across the United States. Through community engagement, the Schmidt Family Foundation volunteer matches up to $1,000 of associate contributions annually, as well as donations of their time. We also provide PTO for our associates to volunteer on causes that they are passionate about in their communities. The ACT Fund supports our associates and families in times of need. And the foundation also provides up to $30,000 of scholarships to associates, family members annually. In the last 25 years, the US Venture Schmidt Family Foundation has raised more than $50 million to address the causes of root cause of poverty in our own community. We strongly desire to make a difference in the world in which we work and the communities in which we operate far and wide. Here's just a small sample of organizations which we support on an annual basis. Finally, in conclusion, I'd be remiss not to thank the Oklahoma City Chamber, specifically Ms. Wellness and Ms. Martin for their help. They've been extremely helpful to me and our folks up in Appleton, Wisconsin. I'd also like to thank Ms. McSpatter from the city. She's been very, very helpful as well. In conclusion, if approved, we would look forward to standing up an operation, or a distribution center in Oklahoma City next year. Thank you. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them at this time.
Thank you for deciding on Oklahoma City.
Thank you.
Yes, indeed. We appreciate it. Any other questions or?
I have a couple of questions. As pertaining to your company, are you felon friendly?
Felon friendly, yes, ma'am. So we do believe in second chances. We have markets in which our HR business partners do and make opportunities available to those with felonies. We have some pretty great examples of that in other markets, in the Kansas City and St. Louis markets, where that has been very successful for us. And so we'll continue to do that and work with our HR business partners to do that upon location here.
And those jobs that you will be bringing here will include that population if needed?
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for your commitment to Oklahoma City. Okay, so next up in order is BK. We have a presentation there.
Yes, Aubrey McDermott, Assistant City Manager, is here to give a quick presentation on this. This is actually giving us access to the second round of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. And it's an agreement with continuing that program that we've had with the Communities Foundations of Oklahoma. And I really appreciate the work that they've done. Aubrey's had this partnership and they've been great partners with us. Getting this first round of funding out was questionable at first, just because it was such an effort. And they have just put heroic efforts into getting this out into the community. I really appreciate this. And so I'm looking forward to, Aubrey, giving us the presentation, just the update on the program.
Yeah, thank you. Mayor and Council, good morning. Aubrey McDermott, Assistant City Manager. So as you know, the city has received several different buckets of funds to help with the resident support function related to COVID assistance. And you'll remember when we first had the CARES Act approved, the city received the Coronavirus Relief Fund, had a portion of those funds dedicated to a resident support program. And that resident support program, we partnered with Communities Foundation of Oklahoma. They stood up Community Care Partners to administer that program. It provided housing assistance, utility relief, many other types of supportive services for people who had lost their jobs or were affected from COVID. So since that program wrapped up on the closeout of that program, the federal government started a new program that was specific to emergency rental assistance. So this narrowed the scope a little bit from our original residence support program to only residential renters in Oklahoma City. And it also narrowed the group of people that could be eligible for that, low to moderate income renters in Oklahoma City. And it was also narrowed to rental and utility assistance with very little flexibility until later days in this process for other types of housing stability services. But that program is the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. We're calling it ERA1 because now there's an ERA2. So the ERA1 program allocated $19.6 million, 99% of which has already been spent from Community Care Partners. They've done a phenomenal job. Community Care Partners, when they were set up, really with this focus of our resident support program, ended up becoming an entity that other cities and even the state and different counties have worked with to get the CARES dollars out into the community. So the state, many other municipalities besides Oklahoma City, got this emergency rental assistance. And the Community Care Partners Group is able to administer a lot of that to the different entities. So wherever you are, in the state or the county or the city, in different cities, you can call this one entity and figure out where you qualify and who to go to. So they've been phenomenal in getting those dollars out the door, as Mr. Freeman said. So the scope of this program is a little bit narrower. But with the ERA2 source of funds, which now actually comes out of ARPA, it's a little bit broader. So we have a little bit different rules. Eligibility requirements are still basically the same. You have to be low to moderate income. But you can also spend the money on other types of housing stability services. So the city received an initial tranche of funds for the ERA2 program, $6.2 million. If we spend a certain percent of that by a certain timeframe, we qualify for the second tranche of funds, which would be $9.3 million. So this contract before you today extends the ability for Communities Foundation of Oklahoma, through Community Care Partners, to continue to administer the emergency rental assistance with this first tranche of funds. They definitely have a backlog of applications, even though they've spent 99% of that first ERA1 allocation. There's a backlog. And so there's a demonstrated need in the community. They do believe that they'll be able to spend that 6.2 or the amount that the federal government's going to require for them to spend to qualify for the second tranche of funds. So we structured the contract to be able to come back and add that once we qualify for the second tranche. So hopefully you'll be seeing us again with a modification to the contract. The contract's going to be effective through December 31st of 2025. And I just wanted to see if you have any questions about that. But we also invited Jenny Bass-Carl here today so that she could give you an update on the ERA program itself and help you answer any questions about functionality, need, anything else, just to give you an update. So both Jenny and I are here to answer questions. If you have any specific to the contract, I'm happy to answer those now, and then I'll turn it over to Jenny. Okay, Ms. Jenny Bass-Carl, thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Jenny Bass-Carl, the Executive Director of Community Care Partners. We are a public-private partnership program headed under Communities Foundation of Oklahoma. This has been a phenomenal experience. When I was asked to do this on June 1st, I had no freaking idea. And here we are today, and it's still going on. But it really is an incredible opportunity. I know personally it has opened my eyes to the issue of homelessness and housing instability in this community and statewide. It has also brought so many different partners to the table. We have obviously the city, Oklahoma County, Cleveland County, the state of Oklahoma. We meet biweekly, and we have people from all different areas, from philanthropies and foundations, from different nonprofit associations, from the Fed, from the Senator's office. It's just been an incredible experience. And I think that speaks highly of the people of this community and statewide, that when people are in need, they come together. And they come together and lend a hand, and they lend a hand to raise them up. And for so many people, they are at a precipice and they're getting ready to fall off. And with the funds that are available through the three different now acts from Congress, we have been able to administer these funds to help people get to the other side and keep standing. Because when people keep standing, we are all better off. We are better off economically. We are better off as humans. And this truly is relief for tenants and for landlords. Most of our funds are paid directly to landlords. To date statewide, we have spent over, close to $90 million statewide. And as Aubrey mentioned, 99% of the Oklahoma City funds, as well as the Oklahoma County funds and Cleveland County. And how we do it is people apply online. We vet them, their application, make sure that they comply with the treasury requirements as well as these contracts. And then we work with the landlords as much as we can. We have a lot of landlords, unfortunately, that don't want the money. I don't understand it, but they don't. And so in that case, we do do direct tenant pay, all according to the treasury guidelines. These are unique funds because they are treasury funds, as opposed to a lot of assistance in the past that comes from other agencies. And I would like to also bring you all up to date. We have recently signed over 30 contracts with housing stability partners across the state, many of them located in this community. And they will be able to add that extra layer of wraparound services. We are a check writing institution. We do not have case managers. We don't have the time or nor is it our mission. But these partners have, we were able to allocate 10% of each of the funds that we represent. So we have given about $20 million from Legal Aid, Heartline 211, Homeless Alliance, Pivot, Positive Tomorrows, YWCA, Palomar, Diversion Hub. So many amazing institutions that are there to help people and bring us together and make us better. And if you have any other questions about the organization or the work that we do or the over 20,000 families that we have already helped, and we do have a backlog of about 25,000 right now in the pipeline, that the need, the need is, it's there. It's real. And the thing is, when you are living paycheck to paycheck and you miss one paycheck, it doesn't just take a month. It takes a year or two to catch back up. Because everything is behind, the debt grows. And when we're able to get people up and put this money into our economy, we all benefit. So I really, really appreciate your all's overwhelming support and your continued belief in this program. And thank you very much. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer. Thanks.
You said they could apply online. Where do they go?
Okay, ccpg.org. We just ramped up a new platform application. It's used by over 80 jurisdictions across the country. And we feel like it's a little bit easier platform. So we are constantly, constantly working on improvement. We really should be called Community Change Partners because we change a lot in order to keep up and make it better. But it's okcp.org.
What is the process for a community? Clearly, there's a need for folks to be housed with you as far as employment. So what is that process like? And then I'll have a follow-up question to that.
Well, I'm sorry, what, the process for applying?
As far as the community members who may seek employment, because I knew you all were hiring because you need positions filled. And I've been having some calls and different questions asked from folks pertaining to my community who have said they have not been able to receive employment or gain employment. And I'm just curious what those barriers may be and what we can do to ensure that we have diversity and ensure that there's diversity in that part of what we're doing in this work.
Sure. So Community Care Partners, because we were set up really as a temporary program, because at first we thought this was a six-month deal, again. And we are all independent contractors. CFO has employees, but we are all independent contractors who do work just on this one project. And we have right now about 135 or 140 independent contractors with CCP. The great majority are full-time. There are a few part-time contractors still available. And what, how we get our independent contractors is word of mouth always for everything. Isn't that always the best way to get somebody? But we, so if someone comes along and they go, well, I've got no someone. And we've been able to staff up that way. We've also had turnover. It's not easy work. It's really hard hearing these stories day in, day out. And you have to be computer literate to do this. So we have lost some people, without a doubt, and we keep adding. We also advertise on Indeed. And we have a policy, I kind of joke, but it's not really, like our dress code. I don't care. I don't care what you wear, what you look like, anything. Just cover from here to here, and I'm good.
Just cover from here to here, and I'm good. Do the work, be honest, be passionate, and work your tail off, because it's hard work. And we have a very, very diverse group of contractors. We have some that are out of this area, because we do represent the whole state, so we have a few. We are primarily, I would say, about 60% to 70% remote. And unfortunately, it means I haven't gotten to meet everybody except online. And then we have our leadership team always comes in at least four days a week to the office. We're getting ready, actually, to move offices also. So we do have a very diverse group, and I'm really grateful for that. And we have a Director of HR and an Assistant Director, and they follow through with all of the interviews. We don't do extensive interviews. It really, we are moving so fast. It's a lot of, I mean, I think one of the, actually, one of the people, we have an Oklahoma City School Board member that works for us, we have a representative from the state that works for us, we have a wide variety of people. And for a lot of people, they were out of work before we were able to bring them on. And so that's been awesome also. We've been able to essentially employ, but contract with over 130 people with really good jobs. And I'm very proud of that fact, too. You mentioned you had a follow-up question?
It's probably something we'll probably need to talk offline about, because, again, I guess my questions have been more specific to the people that have reached out to me saying that they have been through the process and they were unable to become an independent contractor, or the process has been very lengthy for them to be able to go through that process as well. So it may just be some individual concerns that maybe you can help me address.
I'm happy to visit with you about that.
Thank you.
I will say, probably the biggest requirement we have is a technology requirement. It is a BYOD environment. You bring your own device, so you rely upon your own computer to do the work, and you have to be pretty computer literate. That is the one skill that we have to have. And we have, are always increasing and have a good base of also bilingual contractors, because that's truly a need also.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you all very much.
I have a question.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. How much, well, first, before a question, like, a thank you for just the work you all have been doing for the last, you know, year, maybe even year and a half, it seems like.
Whatever the timeframe is.
Time's a construct, anyway, I'm to understand. What, in terms of the money from the federal government, I know you mentioned the CARES Act. Are we, is some of this also coming as well? You mentioned the backlog, so I'm wondering how much money from, like, ARPA or anything more recently will be able to come to help you all with this backlog you're describing? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
I think so. I'll try to answer, and you'll tell me if it does. The first round was CARES dollars, the CRF funds. And we spent those ending in December. This fund, what we're currently spending right now is only ERA One. And the state total got $264 million for the state, and then Tulsa, Tulsa County, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma County, and Cleveland County. And then ERA Two, the state total is 210 potential dollars. So right now, we're just spending ERA One. So with this contract, we will be able then to offer residents of Oklahoma City ERA Two funds. Yes, we have spent essentially all of the ERA One funds for Oklahoma City, but all we do is, we just switch them over to state funding. That is the advantage of having one organization that handles all the funds for the state, is that we can make sure people get help no matter what. So even if we had zero city dollars left, the residents of Oklahoma City would still get help with our state dollars. So we're able to do it that way. And state dollars, we've spent about 34%, 35% of those, but they're starting to come on kind of fast and furious by, it's honestly just slower out in the rural community, the response, there's distrust, there's just a lot of different issues. Each community has different issues, and that's why partnering with the Housing Stability Partners, I'm really excited about. And that wasn't clarified by Treasury until the end of the summer that we could do that. But it's really exciting, because it gives people, us, feet on the ground in communities where there's already trust, and they know their communities, they know their needs. But here in Oklahoma City, by far, our greatest, not only the city dollars, but also state dollars, this has been the largest, this area has been the largest expenditure, because the need, of course, in the urban area is great. And Tulsa has reached very similar needs and understanding up there. Before COVID, Oklahoma City was 20th in the nation on evictions. They have not done an update since then, but they are coming fast and furious. There are some days, we're in Oklahoma County courthouse every single day that there's an eviction docket. There are some eviction dockets, close to 200. And you have some weeks, eight eviction dockets. So the problem is real. And I understand, too, even being a landlord, is that when people don't pay, you need the income. So we try to work with these landlords and get the money in their hands. They deserve it if they've been providing services.
Yeah. And I also, just, again, I just want to thank you, just your continued engagement throughout this.
Thank you.
The eviction town hall we had, like, just different moments where you all have really just brought these services and kept people informed everywhere, from CARES Act through the American Rescue Plan. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'll tell my team.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that everything on that topic? Okay. Councilwoman Nice wanted to talk about item B U.
Yes. I brought this up because I did mention this in my updates with the city manager on yesterday, pertaining to this RFP being moved forward with the implementation plan of us not even having our subcommittees in place for these types of conversations, regardless of what's happening. And again, in the word of transparency, of conversation of transparency pertaining to MAPS Four, pertaining to Innovation District, pertaining to all of the things that we know we should be upfront with the conversation to our community. This is something that I would like for us to consider once a subcommittee is established, in the reason being, and even with the plan that is coming, or the project that's coming online, I have even discussed my concerns with that developer, because, again, here we are, where we haven't even created these subcommittees, but we're moving forward with plans. So just from the conversation we had at the beginning, when someone said that committees have not been established, then it seems to me that even, we can use that same language being brought forward with this. Committees have not been established, and it would be best to look at that in particular before we move forward with issuing a RFP for an operator for Innovation Hall. So that's where I feel with this particular project. I'm not against any of what's happening, but the process is what I would like for us to be cognizant of, what we're doing and how we're doing it. If truly, in fact, this is going to be a voice of the people, to be able to speak to these subcommittees and what that particular aspect is.
Okay. All right. Well, then, item BV is the last one that there's a presentation scheduled for.
Thank you, David Todd, MAPS Program Manager. The good news is, I do not have a presentation. I'm just bringing up this to your attention, that this item is to remove the Freedom Center from the implementation plan. And that comes at the request of the board from the Freedom Center. And in the audience today, we have Christina Beatty, Leonard Benton, and Pastor Lee Cooper here. All have been in support of this. They have been able to raise some private funds, and if we take this out of the implementation plan, the funds that were already set up for the Freedom Center would go into the Clara Looper Civil Rights Center. So this comes to you with the full recommendation, unanimous recommendation, from the Citizens' Advisory Board.
Well, my congratulations to everybody for raising that money. I know that's not easy. And, do you want to speak, Leonard? Yeah, feel free. And come on forward, Leonard. But really exciting development. I mean, it just allows us to have more resources for the Clara Looper Civil Rights Center. Go ahead, Leonard.
Okay. Good morning. I'm Leonard Benton. I'm Chairman of the Board of the Freedom Center of Oklahoma City. Just three years ago, last month, is this city council, and your great wisdom is that you designated the Freedom Center to be a historic landmark in the city of Oklahoma City. And since that time, is that we have had tremendous progress in terms of taking an old dilapidated building, an organization that had not functioned since the death of Mrs. Clara Looper, and in the process of building a brand-new, state-of-the-art, 5OC3 organization. The level of support that our community provided, including the city council and the MAPS Four campaign, it continued as we sought to pursue our objective, that that site and that organization that was founded by Mrs. Looper in 1965, is that that site, now as a designated historic site in the city of Oklahoma City, continues to be owned by the original organization. And we went to the private sector of our community, and we have been very successful in terms of being able to receive the necessary private funding to renovate the historic Freedom Site, that acre of land that exists there at 26 and Martin Luther King. And I might just have to take this opportunity. We all know that a great friend of this city, Sam Bowman, and a colleague of yours, a former member of the city council, is that he came to us and said, "How can I help?" And I said, "You can serve as the Chairman of our Fund Development Committee." And under his leadership, is that, and his reputation, his credibility, his credentials, is that he was able to tell the story for the Freedom Center, to be able for us to secure the funding. We are projecting that we'll have a grand opening. In addition to funds for the restoration of the Freedom Center, is that we have been fortunate, again, from the private sector, to employ a young professional who is the right person for the right job, at this time, as our project coordinator, and that is the person of Christina Beatty. And I'd like for her, count for the first time, to be introduced to members of the city council and to our community, in a new capacity, in a new role, to just kind of give you a very brief highlight in terms of where we are being and where we're headed, okay? Christina? Christina Beatty.
Good morning. Thank you so much for giving us this opportunity. As Mr. Benton shared, I joined the Freedom Center Board, oh, I guess about seven months ago, back in April, started working with the group, and we have been very, very busy. They had been very, very busy before I came on, and things have certainly not slowed down. In addition to focusing on this restoration project, we have been actively planning for the future of the Clara Looper Civil Rights Center, working with Lord Cultural Resources, and just preparing for the future of everything that we want to see this be for Northeast Oklahoma City. But specific to the restoration process, we have been working with our architectural partners, who have been with the board since the MAPS Four campaign. We are working through now a process to go ahead and hire a general contractor. We will be, we just submitted recently to the Historic Preservation Commission to be heard next month, early next month, to get the Certificate of Appropriateness. And then we will be moving forward to secure all permits and everything needed, with the hope to get started with the actual restoration as soon after the first of the year as possible. And so things are moving at lightning speed, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thanks for all you guys are doing.
I just wanted to say, in this process, I wanted to thank the board and the leadership of Mr. Benson and everyone who's worked tirelessly for this process. And we had that presentation for MAPS Four, for this project, on that day. The conversation came up about ownership, and it has never been in the interest of this city to own that building. And that was one of the things that I said on this horseshoe, that I don't want us to own that building. I want the Freedom Center to be able to have ownership, and the community to have ownership, because it belongs to the community. So thank you to everyone, and I know clearly, as we speak, the kind words of Mr. Bowman, he was very instrumental in helping to get where we are. And his thoughts in this process will never be forgotten, and we will always remember his efforts in this process. But again, thank you all. And again, this speaks to community coming together in order for us to save spaces that matter, spaces that speak to civil rights in Oklahoma City, and spaces that speak to the people that built those walls, brick by brick, in the 1960s, for us to have a place to gather and speak about what we would do to continue the efforts of civil rights and social justice in Oklahoma City. So looking forward to August of next year, for us to celebrate together, maybe a little later, we're crossing our fingers for that. But I think this is the best step forward, to have that removed from the MAPS Four Implementation Plan, and for us to look at moving forward independently with what this Freedom Center is going to do and how we can support their efforts continuously.
I also just want to add, thank you for, thank you for the inclusion of Sam in this It really means a lot to those of us in the Northwest neighborhoods and the urban core that we just, I just think we, it's important that voices like Sam's were always contributing to the healing that needs to take place, the division that had been there, the literal division between east and west in these sorts of ways. And just knowing that he poured his heart into the work that you all are also pouring your hearts into, that just gives me such hope and promise, and I just really appreciate you all, just doing the work you're doing, but also bringing Sam's voice into that as well.
Let me send a shout-out to you, James. And James called me here a couple of months ago, I believe it was on a Saturday morning, around eight or nine o'clock, and he had heard about some estate sale that was taking place, and he had the understanding that they had some of the historic stools from the Kate's Restaurant. And I called Christina, and 30 minutes later, she was there at the place that James told us to go. But unfortunately, is that those stools had already been sold. So thanks for the lead, we followed up on it. And just to begin, the lobbying process is that we understand that there's an old jail that may be a sale in there for Mrs. Clara Looper, spent some time, that we would like to see in the new Clara Looper Civil Rights Center. So if we can kind of think about that and work on that as a possibility, looking forward. Thank you.
Thank you again. All right, well, that concludes all the presentations we had scheduled for the Consent Docket, so we can now move it, save the item that was already approved. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. And now I have to step away, and as we proceed to the Concurrent Docket, I turn the chairmanship over to Vice Mayor Stonecifer.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're at page 11 of the agenda today, item number 10, the Concurrent Docket. On the Concurrent Docket, there are six items pertaining to water utilities and the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. I'd take a motion for all six items, please. The motion passes. We'll move now to item 11, items requiring separate votes. We will first take up item 11A, and I'm told by the mayor that we have a presentation on this.
Yes, Jeff.
And 11A also pertains to 11B, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct. Jeff Butler, our Plenary Director, gives a presentation on this item with this amendment to the conference plan.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, and City Managers.
Good morning, Vice Mayor, Council Members, and City Manager Freeman. Happy to introduce this conference plan amendment to you. It was previously reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission, and just don't want to show you a few maps. The location is the very, the far southern, near the southern border of the city, and the request was to change the, what we call the LUDA, the Land Use Topology Area, from Urban Future, and there was a small part that was agricultural preserve to urban low, so that, to facilitate single-family residential development. So, here's the subject site in context of the entire city. And you can see there on this map, the agricultural preserve, kind of on the western side, the Urban Future, which covers most of the, most of the site. So, it was planned at some point to be urbanized. Here is the, it has water availability, it also has sewer availability, and it's, it has decent fire response time, it's in the, what we call the rural response area, just outside of preferable urban response, which is fairly common for areas that are on the edge of the city. We do have an automatic aid agreement with the City of Norman Fire Department, which this, they're right on our southern border at this particular point. So, the surroundings are undeveloped agricultural land and low-density residential uses. There is a mix of different types of zoning, agricultural mostly, with a little bit of R1 to the north, and PUD on the, on the corner of 164th and Pennsylvania. So, the findings in action, the Planning Commission ended up approving this, as I mentioned, the, they felt like this was appropriate, the infrastructure has been extended to this area, and the level of service the Planning Commission felt was appropriate for urban development at this time, and that was approved on August 12th. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Okay? And this was, this is associated with the next item, so the action here is for the Council to receive this item.
So, item 11A, does it need a vote, or just to receive?
We do not.
All right, Counselor Greenwell?
Yes, I, I believe for approval.
We'll now move on to item 11B, which is a related matter, and I'll turn it over to you, Counselor Greenwell.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Amy, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's a proposal to rezone, let's see, how many acres are there? Tim, do you want to come out and speak a little bit about this? It's 95 acres of currently AA zone property.
Yep, good morning, Tim Johnson, here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant also owns the R1 and the PUD 1600 north of 164th Street. We've also applied to close 164th Street, it's not in place, but there are utilities there that we'll respect as the development goes forward. This tract is currently AA, it has a net usable area of about 90 acres, because of the floodplain.
Okay. Yeah. And while this map doesn't necessarily show it immediately to the north and east, we've got substantial residential development in this whole area, at some point, perhaps not in my lifetime, but will eventually be all developed residentially. And we do, we are adjacent to the city of Norman, and two miles to the east, the city of Moore, which is highly developed in this area. We did have a protest letter, not a protest in person, in terms of the streets. Tim, are you aware of that?
Yes. And I, so the concern is the condition of South Penn and the Barditch during stormy conditions, so as we improve and make our entrances off of Penn, that condition will improve. Penn will remain two lanes until such time that there is a bond issue or spending to allow it to be widened, but the drainage that you see in this photograph will improve as part of our drainage study and improvements.
Great. Well, hopefully, Public Works is watching, and we'll get those improvements down there on South Penn. Okay, well, with that, I will move for approval.
We'll now move on to item 11C, which is an ordinance on final hearing. I understand that there's been a requested deferral on this. Is that a consensual deferral, or do we need a vote? No vote? All right. We'll move on to item 11D, which is an ordinance on final hearing, to rezone 424 Northwest, 122nd Street, from R1 single-family to R2 medium-low density. I'll turn that over to you, Counselor Nice.
Has anyone signed up to speak?
No.
There is no, no one signed up to speak.
Okay, thank you. This is to permit a duplex to be built. I do understand there were some protesters present. Is the applicant here? I do understand it was adopted by our Planning Commission for recommendation, so with that, I will move for approval.
We have a motion? And a second? The ordinance pass?
The ordinance has passed.
I'm sorry. James?
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm confused, and it could just be, as I was looking at these, the two previous items, I'm a bit confused from planning staff about what's happening out on Pennsylvania. I don't know what to do about that. When I'm looking at item A and B together, I'm just confused about them. Like, is the, is it appropriate to ask this? I'm confused who's brought this, because when I was looking at it first, it seemed like this was like a, this regular item that would come for a separate vote in terms of zoning, but now, I thought that this was something that, it's confusing to me, was this something that planning wanted to amend to the comprehensive plan, or was this something that a developer came to us about wanting to do?
Jeff, you want to come back up?
Just a second. James, to be clear, and make the record clear, you're referring to item 11A and B, please?
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm confused.
Okay, I'm sorry, could you explain the process, like where we have some of these situations that occur, where it would require an amendment to the plan, where it's something that staff is agreeable to and recommends, the process that we've gone through. We've had a couple of other of these in the last, I don't know, six months or so, but if you could just explain that process. Sure. Yes, so, so the, the, the plan needs amendment, just to keep it relevant and a living plan, and there are a couple of things that we do. The planning staff will occasionally go through, and as, as water and sewer expand, or system expands, and there might be other changes that are relevant, we will go ahead and recommend to the Planning Commission that we bring additional land into urban low for urbanization, or other changes. Additionally, sometimes, some land, a developer will, sometimes a piece of land will become available that we didn't anticipate, and, you know, maybe sewer or water extensions happen a little quicker than we anticipated, and so it becomes available, it becomes appropriate to urbanize, and so we go ahead and recommend to the Planning Commission that they go ahead and do that. And in that case, it's an application by a developer, and usually, they come in and are requesting a rezone, and so, in order to get that rezone, they'll need a comprehensive plan amendment, so they often go hand in hand. So, that's what happened here. The Planning Commission has jurisdiction of the plan, so they can actually adopt the change to the plan, which is why the Council receives it. But then, of course, now that the plan is changed, the rezoning is now appropriate, because it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and then the recommendation proceeds to Council.
So, in this instance, it was a developer wanting to, that's, it's that latter process you just described, right?
I'm sorry, I had a little trouble reading.
It's the latter process you just described, where someone came to?
Yes, this, yeah, item A and B, that was a, it went forward together as a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezone, and the Planning Commission approved the comprehensive plan amendment, and then they approved a recommendation for the rezone to the Council.
I don't know what's possible. If nothing's possible, that's fine. I have pretty serious reservations when it's not coming from us wanting to do this, particularly as it relates to the agricultural parts of our, of our city, and I've spoken about this previously, many times, just my worry about preserving agricultural space and green space. I don't know if this is something where, can we go back? Because I don't, I, I know I signed off on it, I would prefer not to, know better understanding this, what you just described to us.
Kenny, your thoughts?
Yes, you have to, you've already made the vote, so you would have to move to reconsider the item, and then get a second on that, then they vote, Council would vote to reconsider the item, then it's back before you, and a motion can be made to approve with a second, and then you can vote no.
It would be simple, I'm sure it will still pass, I just, it would really mean a lot to me, actually, you all, if we could do that.
So, you can make the motion to reconsider?
So, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider, please.
And is that, you're talking about A first, right?
Yes, please.
That, A, A is just receiving that.
Okay, so then, then B, thank you.
Right. And just, because you may not be aware of this, this area, 164th and South Penn, is two miles west of one of the largest high schools in the state of Oklahoma, Southmore. It's a developed, a developing area that will continue to receive more and more interest in future development. Plus, the applicant has left the room, so I'm not comfortable with bringing up this item for a revote.
Could we, as maybe an alternative, since the applicant's not here now, and can't voice his or her opinion, could we just note on the record that if we had, if we revoted this, you would have voted nay, and it'll be a part of the record? And that's doable.
Yes, you can note that.
We can put it on the record.
And we will note it in the minutes.
Such as it is, that will, that will be fine.
I mean, if you want to do it differently, tell me, and I'll try to help you any way I can.
Well, I just don't know that there's enough, I mean, is this something, I mean, I'm asking Council, is this something you will?
I think the unfair thing, and what everybody's noticing, is the applicant's no longer here.
Sure.
If we revoted, it would still pass. So, just making a note that you voted wrong, and that you want to show your protesting to be okay.
Well, if we revoted, it would still, I'm just thinking about this, if we, I'm sorry? Is there an opinion?
No.
I was just saying, if we revote, it will still pass, like the applicant, this won't change it, you see what I mean? So, I still would like to put it up for a vote, and then, if not, then I'll put it in the minutes. So, I'd like to vote to rescind, and then, I would like, and then, should that vote fail, then I would like to put in the minutes that I would have voted no. That's what I'm saying.
All right.
He's made a motion.
Are you going to make a motion?
Yes.
On the record? Can you make the motion, and we'll see if there's a second?
I'd like to, I would love to.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone's patience.
Four to three, the motion passes, and so now, we'll entertain another motion to approve item 11B, correct, David?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your help.
Need five votes for this.
Didn't say that.
Are we waiting on the motion to be made?
It hasn't came up.
Thank you.
Wait. Dana?
Is the mayor gone?
We're supposed to be voting on B, correct?
It can't just be a simple majority?
We're voting on item 11B to approve it.
11B is an ordinance. Any ordinance needs five votes. So, you, if you don't get five votes, you've essentially changed the result.
After Gaule.
So, it looks like we showed A is rescinded, but it should have been B, correct?
Yeah.
It should be B.
We can fix that.
Okay.
So, do we need to revote on the recension of B?
Can we, is the, will the mayor be back? Can we save this to the end?
We can move it.
You need someone to?
I think we need to revote on it, if we had A up there, it wasn't supposed to be B.
You have, you have five votes, right? Or am I wrong? No, you don't.
You just go to B, and we'll remove it from A later.
Okay. Because it was only Councilwoman Hammond who voted no earlier.
Why don't we just note in the minutes that you would have voted nay? Because it's not fair to the applicant not being here.
It's true. I just, I really have a difficult time with this area continuing to be developed. I just do.
So, as long as you?
We can vote the recension again, because we had the wrong item up, and vote that recension again, with everyone understanding that it requires five votes to be able to rescind.
Okay, do we need to? Do we need to first move to rescind that vote we just took on item A?
Yes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to rescind the vote we just took on item A.
I'll make the motion to rescind the vote on item A.
Thank you. Is there a second?
B.
And then I?
This says B.
This is A.
It says A.
All right.
This is rescinding the recension.
All right.
And I don't want to do that, so I'm, yeah, you need to, you need to vote.
I want to rescind.
You need to vote to rescind.
So, I'm saying yay?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, just to be clear for the record, yeah, I think James was moving to rescind B, correct?
That's what we're trying to correct.
So, you just?
We corrected our mistake.
Correct.
Corrected A, now, now there needs to be a motion to rescind item 11B, and everybody needs to remember, if we do this, we'll ultimately have to have five votes to approve B.
No, if you, if you rescind the vote to rescind B, then it's back to where it was. In other words, you voted to rescind your approval of B.
Okay.
But now, in that pass, now you've voted to rescind the rescision.
No, it didn't. We corrected A.
So, what happened is they got A up there initially, they put the wrong one up there and voted on the wrong one. So, they rescinded that one, now, now he's moving for a recension on B.
But you only had, you only had one vote, though. So, if you're saying that the motion was to A, then B is still good.
The first time we voted at A...
That's right.
Accidentally.
It said A. So, we rescinded that. B is...
Oh, okay.
B at this point is still good. Now...
He hadn't made a motion on B yet.
He has not made a motion on B.
So, make a motion to rescind B, and then you'll get... Then it will fail. You get a second, and it will fail. Or you could just ask it to be noted in the record that you would have voted no.
Say it one more time.
We'll rescind the vote. We will vote again, and it will still pass because there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, five to two.
But not everyone knew how everyone was going to vote.
We don't know how everybody's going to vote. Okay.
It seems fairly obvious to me, but whatever.
You like to do...
What Councilwoman Hammond just suggested is what I'd like to do.
Okay. So, will you make a motion to rescind B?
Yes.
Please.
Please. I'd like to make a motion to rescind B.
Is there a second? There is a second. Please cast your vote. The motion fails. All right.
Now, you can add it to the record.
Okay.
All right. Would you like the minutes to reflect that you would have voted nay?
I would very much like the minutes to reflect I would have voted nay. I appreciate everyone's patience to that. It just means a lot to me.
And that's as to 11B, you would have voted nay?
Yes, as to 11B. Thank you.
All right. The record's clear. Now, we are at Item Craig 11E. This is an ordinance on final hearing, but it was requested to be stricken.
That's right.
Do we need to vote on that?
No.
All right. Let's go to Item 11F. And it was requested for a deferral, which we will need to vote. No vote?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, Item G was requested to be stricken, so we don't need anything on that. We are now at Item H, which is an ordinance on final hearing to rezone 330 Southwest 104th Street from AA Agricultural District to Spud 1313. I'll turn it over to Ward Five, please.
Mark, thank you. Vice Mayor, thank you. This is a request for rezoning from Agriculture, AA Agriculture, to Spud 1330 to allow for an increase in the amount of personal storage facilities. It was approved unanimously by the Planning Commission. I would recommend approval.
And there's no one that's signed up to speak? I'm locked up.
How do you vote?
I vote yes. And I'm not on presentation. We'll now go to Item I, which is an ordinance on final hearing to rezone 1900 Linwood Boulevard from I-2 moderate industrial district to Spud 1342.
Yes.
There are two people that have signed up to speak on this.
Yes, I'd love to hear from them.
All right. First is Jeff Saban. And Jeff, would you please state your name and your home address for the record?
Jeff Saban, 301 North Harvey, Suite 100. I'm here representing the applicant, actually. 19 LLC, and Chip Fudge is the principal for that entity. I just wanted to go over three of the main reasons why Chip is pursuing a spud on this property. This property is located at Linwood Boulevard and Kentucky Avenue at the southwest corner. And the three main reasons he's asking for this spud is, one, to maintain the current I-2 uses primarily, but to add several based on his proposed tenants and potential tenants that he's been speaking with. And those uses that would be added would be drinking and eating establishments where alcohol is permitted, outdoor recreation, and then artistic graphic and murals. The outdoor recreation and entertainment use, in our discussions with the Planning Commission and with the planning staff leading up to this, they told us this is one of the few areas of the city where they think that this would be appropriate because it was adjacent to higher use, higher industrial uses. The second reason Chip is pursuing the spud is to ensure that all the existing buildings and footprints are conforming with the zoning in case that there's future expansion or renovation. Most of the buildings, with the exception of the smokehouse built for Edgecraft BBQ recently, were all built in the 1940s, long before the city's current setback restrictions and whatnot were in place. And this area was really kind of a rare area where it was designed to be a walkable industrial area, near residential uses. The technical edit that the Planning Commission recommended and that we were amenable to was with any new construction that would come on the property, that there would be no ethus as a primary building material, and that any new buildings or construction would kind of be designed to mirror the industrial design of the existing buildings. And the third reason was mainly to address parking issues. We actually received a variance for parking issues for two of the new tenants last fall, but that was always going to be a temporary solution. They're very limited. There's no room for expansion, really, without tearing down any of the current buildings to put new parking spaces on site. We have added off-street parking along Kentucky Avenue. The designs have already been approved by the city, and it's mostly constructed. It has not yet been striped. There will also probably be issues with parking and with the building footprints for a lot of the other properties along Linwood as it starts to get more redevelopment interest. Chip has been talking with other property owners in the area. They're starting to envision an ironworks district of renovated and rehabilitated, more mixed use as opposed to the current industrial uses in that area. With that, I'm happy to ask or answer any questions. Chip's architect is also here if you guys have any issues around the design.
Any questions from anyone? We have a second person that's signed up to speak. Mr. Daniel Smith, please.
That's Chip's architect.
Okay.
Well, I don't have any questions for y'all. I know I was able to connect on Friday to talk more about this project. And yeah, I think especially I loved to hear the work to address the parking minimums issue. I think it makes a lot of sense to not, yeah, tear part of a building down to add parking, particularly because, as we heard earlier, we're having kind of a street redo along Linwood and for that with the air quality grant. And I actually just received our monthly embark report this morning, and there's a few stops on that corridor that are some of the highest traffic bus stops in the ward. So, and there are multiple buses that go down that stretch. So, I think it just makes sense to help encourage folks to... Especially if they're going to a brewery or getting some beer with their barbecue. Maybe driving is not the best idea. So, yeah, I just appreciate y'all kind of being thoughtful through that, and also our discussion about working with Neighborhood Association in the area as this sort of thoughts and ideas about this corridor are being discussed among the property owners on Linwood to really be working with them to make sure that it's really beneficial to all the folks in the area. And yeah, I just appreciate your openness to that, and I will move for approval.
I'm going to say, Chip has already forwarded that information on to his tenants, and they seem pretty receptive to it.
All right. We have a motion and a second. It passes. We are on to Item 11J. At the bottom on page 12, it's an ordinance on final hearing to rezone 11901 Eckerd Drive from AA Agriculture to Spud 1345.
Yes, I understand that someone has signed up to speak, so I would like to hear from...
All right. At this time, if I'm reading this correctly, Sheri Jensen? Would you please state your name and address?
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
My name is Sheri Jensen. I represent the Trust of Woma Yarborough. The address is 11701 North Eckerd, Edmond. I just wanted a little more clarification on what exactly they were planning and why they were splitting that. The residents of Eckerd, whether they've been there 50 years or five years, moved out there because they wanted five acres away from their neighbors. My concern is why are they rezoning as a spud? I've just been able to do a little bit of research on this. Why not eat an RA2 or an R2 if they were planning to put a second house on the property? That kind of leaves it open to build condos and townhomes and other multifamily use things. The street has never had a homeowners association, so we don't really have a way of putting forth our needs and what are wants and to protect our interests of having moved out there. Like I said, whether they've been out there 50 years or five years, they moved out there for that reason.
I'm hoping we can either get the... If the developer's here or our planning department to be able to address the question she just asked. And possibly for... If the developer's not here, I'm going to ask that we defer this. So, I'm not seeing anyone speak up. Okay.
Would you please state your name and home address?
Mark Grubbs, 1800 South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. This is simply an application. This lot is slightly under five acres, 4.9 acres, and the application was for the spud to allow for the splitting of the lot to allow for two single-family homes.
Okay, the question has been asked to ensure as far as to afford this spud that we remove... I know that's not going... That's not a consideration in this spud, but the possibility of ensuring that that language is included, that it will not allow the ability for townhomes, duplexes, apartments. I'm not sure how that would work. So, I would like for someone from our staff to help me with that ask. Ms. Jensen, I know that's not the answer, but are you comfortable with us ensuring that the language has that it will not ever be developed into that if it is a spud, that it moves forward with those restrictions?
Bob Teener, Development Services Director. That use unit's not in the spud. It's not proposed in there. So, I mean, he's going to be limited to two lots and two structures on two acres. A little over two. Single families, all that's allowed.
Okay. And I know as we look at spuds and puds, and I'm still learning a lot about that in the language, too, of what can and cannot be added. Is it still a possibility for us to add that language that it... Or is... Help me with that as far as the definition of that.
A new application or rezoning, a new notice. So, the notice went out for single-family.
Okay.
And to do a townhouse or anything like that, you would have to rezon it.
Even under the spud?
Yes.
Okay.
It is an AA base, which does not permit those uses.
Did that answer, Ms. Jensen? Are we okay? Okay, thank you. Okay, now that we have that clarification, and again, I just want to ensure that we address the residents' concerns. So, now that we have done that and that is on record, I will move that we approve this application.
We have a motion and a second. Cast your vote. It passes. We'll now move on to Item 11K, which is found at page 13 of the agenda. This is an ordinance on final hearing. It deals with the closing of 119-foot portion of a five-foot platted utility easement. It is in Ward Eight. No one has signed up in protest, and it was approved by planning, so I would move for approval of this at this time. It passes. We'll now move on to Item 11L. And is this the third of the third meetings, I think, for this ordinance, which is an ordinance on final hearing to amend Chapter 57, Article 5 of the Oklahoma City Municipal Code? Yeah. So, are there any questions? We have no one signed up to discuss. If not, we'll entertain a motion and a second. It passes. So, we'll now move on to ordinance on final hearing 11M. And I'll turn it over to Ward One. Bradley?
We're just establishing a parking setback, so unless we have anybody that's... Never mind. I move for approval.
We have a motion. We have a second? It is approved. Now, we'll move to Item 11N, which is an ordinance on final hearing, establishing two reserved parking spaces. This comes out of Ward One, please.
Again, I move for approval.
Please cast your votes. It is approved. We're now at Item 11O, which is a public hearing for amendments to the ambulance code. This is the second of three hearings. Has there been anyone sign up to speak?
No, there hasn't.
All right. The public hearing is concluded. We'll go to Item 11P, which is a public hearing, again, second of three. This is the preparation of requests and specifications for wrecker service applicants. Has anyone signed up to speak?
No, they haven't.
We'll close the public hearing. We'll now move on to Item 11Q, which is the public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Do we have anyone signed up to speak? Seeing none, we'll move to Item Q2, which requires a vote of the resolution. We have a motion and a second. It passes. The next item is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures found at 11R. Anyone signed up to speak?
No.
All right.
For 11R, I have a request from staff to defer Item R1K for two weeks, so I'd like to make that motion.
And that's the property of 111 Southwest Evern...
Are we still requesting that?
...Western Avenue, correct?
Yes, correct.
Chad Davidson, Co-Enforcement Superintendent. What this basically is, is we've had a contractor reach out to us. They believe they're going to be able to take care of that within the next couple of weeks or so.
All right. So, we'll first have a motion for deferring 11RK. That deferral passes. We'll now move on to 11R2, which is a resolution that needs a vote, declaring the structures That passes. We'll now turn to page 15 of the agenda, and we will look at 11S, which is a public hearing regarding abandoned buildings. I'm not aware of anybody signing up to speak, so we will close the public hearing and move...
I would like to...
I'm sorry.
The same item is...
Oh, I'm sorry.
On the same property as on this docket as well, so...
It's I?
Yes, correct.
Okay, I.
One I.
Thank you.
For two weeks.
We have a motion and a second. The deferral is granted. We'll now move to 11S2, resolution declaring buildings are abandoned.
Mine's not popping up, but I'll vote yes.
I'll vote I.
Does it pass? Yes. All right. We'll now move to item 11T, which is a public hearing regarding a joint resolution with the Oklahoma City Economic Development Trust approving an increase in the amount of $100,000 to the previously approved allocation of $1 million. Is there anyone here to speak today at this public hearing?
No.
All right. Then we will move to item 11T2, which is a joint resolution that requires a vote. I'll make a motion in second, please. Item 11T2 passes. We'll now move to item 11U, which I think we're going to have a presentation, and this will also require a vote, correct?
Yes, sir. Matt Boggs, our city treasurer, is here just to give us an update. Periodically, we update the investment policy. Sometimes it's changes that we're looking to make. Sometimes it's changes related to state law. I'm going to let Matt give us an update on these changes.
All right, Matt Boggs, city treasurer. And what you have before you today is an update to the city's investment policy. It has been a few years since we've brought this before the council, so we thought it was appropriate to do a high-level overview of the policy and really why we're bringing forth this change this morning. The authority for the investment policy is set both in the state statute and the Oklahoma City Charter. The Oklahoma City Charter directs the treasurer to have custody of the funds and invest those in a manner consistent with the laws of the state of Oklahoma. And the Oklahoma State statutes essentially lay out the appropriate investments that the treasurer may invest in for the city. It is important to note that this is specifically for the city of Oklahoma City and those trusts that elect to adopt the policy. So for the Oklahoma City Employee Retirement System, the Post-Employment Benefits Trust, and the newly formed MAPS Investment and Operating Trust do not fall under this policy. They will have their own policies that they would adopt because of the different priorities, different timeframes. And so we will not be working with those specific entities. Now, the, so what we do cover is going to be the city of Oklahoma City and those trusts that adopt this policy. Our current investment portfolio is around $1.9 billion as of September 30th. I talked about those allowable investments that the state statute allows us to invest in. Most of our funds are going to be either in U.S. Treasury notes, U.S. government-sponsored enterprises, or money market funds that makes up the bulk of the city investments. The investment policy also talks about the priorities that we have, and it's essential that these priorities are in order: safety, liquidity, and yield. The most important thing is that our investments are safe. The state statutes cover extremely safe investments, and the ones that I talked about, U.S. Treasury notes backed by the full faith and credit of the United States government. The United States government-sponsored enterprises have the implied backing of the U.S. government. And money market funds are invested in U.S. Treasuries as well, so those are all going to cover under that, backed by the full faith and credit of the United States government. Consider the gold standard as safety goes in investing. Liquidity is extremely important for what we do for the city's purposes and the operating standpoint, because we need to make sure that funds are available. A great example for that is for debt service payments that need to be made. If we have $70 million for a debt service payment, we want to make sure our investments mature in a time so that we can have the cash on hand to make those payments. We have about, right now, if you look at our investment portfolio, the average days to maturity is 470 days, so a year plus in maturity. It would take all our investments to mature. For liquidity purposes, we also like to keep somewhere between 15% and 20% in money market funds, which are extremely liquid. We've got about 19% of our portfolio in those funds right now. And our third priority is the yield. Oftentimes, people will wonder why that isn't number one, but with this being the operating funds of the city, we want to make sure that first and foremost, they're safe. Next, that they're liquid, that they're available. And then yield is going to be our third priority in that. We do review this policy annually, though the last time we updated it was in 2017. And after that point, we did have it certified by the Association of Public Treasurers of the United States and Canada, which brings us to why we're updating our policy this morning. Senate Bill 281 was passed in the most recent legislative session. And under our allowable investments prior to Senate Bill 281, we were allowed to invest in debt of the state of Oklahoma. Now, what Senate Bill 281 then has expanded that to allow to invest in state agencies as well, as long as they met certain safety criteria, if they were investment-grade quality of those investments. So really, what that does is that opens up our ability to invest in debt obligations of agencies. I looked at the state's debt report. The top three agencies that issue debt would be the Oklahoma Turnpike Authority, the Grand River Dam Authority, and the Oklahoma Water Resources Board. But for context, at this point, we do not have any state of Oklahoma debt in our investment portfolio, but we do quote the state statutes directly in our policy in the attachments. And so it was appropriate to, as the state statute changes, for us to update our policy as well to reflect that. And with that, I could take any questions you might have.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you for a good report, Matt. Let's move on to item 11V. Oh, I'm sorry. We have to vote on that? I apologize. Yeah, I see that it's a resolution. Thank you. Cast your votes. It passes. Now we can go to page 16 of the agenda, item 11V, which it's my understanding was deferred to January 18th, 2022, and we do not need a vote. Let's go to item 11W, which I understand that there's going to be a presentation that I really want to see, because rumor has it that Douglas R. Cupper is going to speak to us today.
Yes, Melinda McMillan Miller, our Parks Director, Parks and Recreation Director, is going to present this item to recognize Doug and naming a facility.
Yep, thank you very much, counsel. Today before you, we have a resolution that requesting from the Parks Commission that the I-240 Sports Complex be formally renamed to the Douglas R. Cupper Sports Complex. This item was brought to you from the, both, all five trusts and commissions that the Parks Department serves, being the Golf Commission, Trails Advisory Committee, the Park Commission, the Riverfront Redevelopment Authority, all brought those letters to Chairman Alan Payne for him to consider, and then brought it to the park commissioners for them to vote on, and they actually approved. So we bring that to you today to hopefully recognize Doug's accomplishments of 46 years as in the parks and recreation industry, not only in his service to Oklahoma City in his six-year tenure, but also just in his career of wanting to make every community better and stronger through really dynamic parks and recreation associations.
Great. Doug, can we hear a few words from you? Come on up.
Well, we're waiting for him to come up, Vice Mayor. If I could just say a couple of words.
Sure.
This, this park out there is really important to me. I know I spent a lot of time in my youth as a young adult, I guess, playing softball out there with tons of friends. I mean, this, this park, I'm just, I'm going to enjoy seeing it so revitalized, being able to see, hopefully, Softball USA, be able to utilize it for some tournaments, things like that. I think it's going to be a real boon to our city. And I personally appreciate Mr. Cupper's vision. I know he was the one that originally brought it to my attention, saying, hey, is this something you'd be interested in? Can we do this? And I was like, oh, absolutely. It'd be a fantastic deal. Not only that, working with him on other projects, Manuel Perez Park, you know, he was involved extensively in that project with many members of the community. And I mean, that thing has turned out just absolutely stunning. So with that, I guess we'll hear from you, Mr. Cupper.
I'll keep it short and sweet. I'm just, I was overwhelmed with, with the honor that that was even considered, even the short time that I was here, that, that the people of Oklahoma City felt that I made a difference in their lives. And, you know, I had, I had to come into town by way of the Willa Johnson Facility and the Stewart Clubhouse. You know, I had to stop there and, and see the progress that's going on there. So I'm, I'm just happy to have been a part of the, the greatest experience in my whole career was Oklahoma City. And I love Oklahoma, and I loved working with you all. So I truly appreciate your at least considering this opportunity today. Thank you for everything you did for me while I was here.
You definitely did make a difference, and we are very happy and appreciative that you're here today. Anybody else have any comments, or would, I would entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion for approval. Maybe.
We have a motion in second. Please cast your vote.
Hmm.
It's approved.
Wow.
The next item on the agenda is 11X1, and that is a resolution authorizing a confession of judgment. I'll entertain a motion. Cast your votes. It passes. The next item is 11Y1, which is also a resolution to enter into an agreed settlement. I'll entertain a motion for that item. The resolution passes. We'll now go to item Z, which is claims recommended for denial. I'll entertain a motion for that. The item passes. We'll now go to 11AA, which are claims recommended for approval. I'll entertain a motion. The item passes. We'll now go to item 12, which would be comments from counsel, and we'll start with Ward One today, with Councilperson Carter.
Thank you. You know, with Veterans Day coming up on Thursday, I just wanted to make a, a thank you to all of our veterans, especially, you know, my grandfather, my uncle, my father, who have served our country. I know Ward Four councilmen have served our country as well, and wanted to thank all of our veterans for, for what they've done. And just to also bring awareness to the 22 lives that are lost every day to suicide due to, in our veteran community, as well as our first responders now. So there's a, there's a group that I would like to recognize by the name of Mighty Oaks Foundation, and they work every single day to make sure that they have resources for our veterans and for our first responders at no cost to them or their families, and to help bring them there. And I just wanted to say thank you to, to the men and women who are serving and working in that to, to take care of our veterans and actually working towards getting a lot of them off the streets that are dealing with homelessness right now as well. So that's all I've done.
I wanted to, again, thank counsel for earlier walking me through that kind of not-so-fun moment with the zoning case. I appreciate your patience on that. Secondly, I'd like to extend sincere congratulations to Embarc, particularly their marketing team. The unveiling of the name for our city's first bus rapid transit system, Rapid, which makes so much sense. It's literal. It's right there. It tells you what the function is. I, I love that. And I'm so excited about it. Every time I go to coffee at Elemental downtown on Athan Hudson, I see an Embarc bus right now go on Hudson, and I know that soon that's going to be a bus rapid transit system. Like, that's, that's its route just two years from this fall. And just seeing the excitement on social media when I shared images that Michael Scroggins and his team created of what this is going to look like going through 23rd and Classen, where Councilwoman Hammond and I shared that intersection there for Ward Six and Two respectively. People are very excited, and they're very much looking forward to the new sidewalks coming on Classen and Expressway to go along with the BRT. Just knowing that every 15 to 20 minutes, that service will be there for them at a covered station similar to our streetcar stations. And connecting residents as far northwest as Northwest Expressway and Meridian to the streetcar downtown better in a way that they have not had a chance to really experience, feel to leave their car parked at Coronado Heights and hop on a BRT and get down here and use the streetcar to move around. I, I'm just so excited to go talk to residents about that, and I'm equally excited about the northeast BRT and the southside BRT that MAPS Four will bring to our city, too. And we'll finally have this urban core connected with a reliable public transportation system. So I just really want to applaud Embarc for their work getting us here over the years. So that, that's one thing I would want to say there. I also wanted to, I'm not really sure what the process can look like going forward, but I have to admit, I was a bit heartbroken to arrive at City Hall over the last several days and see the Ward parking spaces and the mayor parking spaces disappear. Now, as you can tell, I biked here, and frequently I move between either my bike or my car to move around our city, the buses too, when I can. I think for me, as someone who, you know, parks my bike not in the Ward Two space which existed, it's, it's not about that, because, you know, I can park, you know, and would still be able to park in any of these city-permitted spaces around City Hall or in any of the public parking garages, and I do. So it's not about, like, needing a space. I think what's, the heartbreaking part for me is I always loved looking from City Hall, seeing those eight spaces next to the mayor's space, and then seeing Patience Ladding's name right there at the corner of Hudson, well, on Patience Ladding. It just speaks, it's an external representation of this body, of this council, seeing words like Ward One, Ward Two, Ward Three, Ward Four, Ward Five, Ward Six, Ward Seven, Ward Eight, and Mayor. It's an external, it's an externalization of who we are inside this building. And as, again, as a public school teacher, someone who knows pretty firsthand the lack of civics in our schools, and especially even when civics exist, the local level we almost never talk about in our classrooms. So it was always such a treat for my middle school students when they would come down here for field trips, and for them to not only come into this building to learn how it works, but to see outside this building what we are, who we are. And my southside students, these were students who almost never came downtown, and they loved those field trips where they had the opportunity to do so. So there's just something very heartbreaking to me, not seeing those spaces alongside Patience's name. And I would maybe put forth a challenge to us to figure out as a body, as staff, what that externalization could look like outside this building. And the, the one other thing I will note on this was, yeah, so when I bike, I will lock my bike up on any of the different bike racks which might exist nearby. Y'all, it is such a neat feeling. I mentioned being a part-time, we're all part-time here. It is such a neat feeling when I'm locking up that bike on either Main Street or over here, or when I get out of my car in that Ward Two space, and when someone from Ward Two sees me, or when someone just from the city just sees me pulling into that space, getting out of my car with my bag, and they know I'm coming into this building to work. They, they know I'm going to be here. I see Councilwoman Nys's car almost, oh my gosh, I mean, I think it's almost daily just sitting there, pull-upside Tom in his truck, like. Or the unique stuff that Councilwoman Hammond did with that parklet recently. I just think it sends a- I just think it sends a message to our people when they see each of us arrive into those spaces, because they know we're here to do the people's business. So I would just really ask us to rethink what we could do going forward in that. And again, I want to stress, it is not about, I need a parking space, because again, the parking spaces, council members will be able to park anywhere that those city-permitted parking spaces are. But it's not just to attend council, it's to attend legislative meetings, transit meetings throughout the day. It's all kinds of stuff. There's moments where each of us have an opportunity to do the people's business. And it's really a very special feeling when someone sees you getting out of your car or parking your bike to do that work here for them. So I would really ask us to rethink what we've done and think about, think about what that externalization of representation looks like. Thank you.
Ward 4, Todd?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just wanted to kind of echo Councilman Carter's sentiments, wishing those that have served or are serving a Happy Veterans Day. And that's it. Thank you.
Ward 6?
Yeah, I think, I just have one comment into a question, and I don't know how much everyone has been following the conversation about our congressional redistricting, proposed maps, but I am incredibly disheartened to see Oklahoma City chopped up between multiple congressional districts. And I think, from the perspective of advocacy at the federal level and shared interest, that the city has a, and city leadership has a incredibly vested interest in having consistent representation. So I'm just curious, I guess, from Craig, I haven't heard anything about advocacy at the state level, maybe official comments that we can submit to the legislature about the way the maps are drawn, because I just think about, when we advocate for things at the federal level, you know, we're talking to our specific representatives and through our lobbyists, and it just seems like it's going to make their, our voice diluted as far as being able to advocate for federal projects, federal funds to be utilized and expended here in a, in a way that is most effective and a best use of those dollars. And I would argue it also dilutes the rural residents that are now going to be potentially represented by somebody who represents the central south side of Oklahoma City, again, diluting their, access to their representative and really targeting the needs of those rural areas. I'm just curious if there's anything through our Government Affairs staff members that we can communicate to the legislature about kind of the, what an odd spot this puts us as a, the city as an organization in.
Yeah, we haven't had direct communication on that. We've had three districts cover the city already, and for us, I mean, there's, I think your point of tying in urban versus, you know, with the rural is a concern. We've also had situations where it's worked to our benefit, where we've had representatives who know that they're tied in with the city and would help carry legislation or support legislation for us. So it's been a little bit of both sides on that, but we have not had direct communication on that. And it's something, you know, where council members individually certainly could reach out, talk with legislative leaders, and the councils as a whole could decide to do that, but we have not had any.
Yeah, just because, yeah, me contacting the legislature isn't the same as the city as a body.
Right.
And, yeah, I'm not sure when our delegation representing both urban and rural has helped us, because they constantly vote against pretty much anything. So I, yeah, I just, I just am very frustrated that, especially for, again, for the south side of the city that has historically been disregarded and disrespected and excluded, that this just, again, dilutes their representation even more, and I think we do a disservice to this idea of one OKC and diversity and representation and inclusion when, when we are silent about their voices getting diluted, even more so than they already have been, and that those powers that be, that have influenced the way these maps are drawn are incredibly self-serving. So that's all I have to say.
Ward 7?
Yes, I have, I have a few comments. I do want to also thank our veterans for their service, and I'm reminded of my great uncles that served, and they actually all served in different branches, and it was fun for them to have that camaraderie of arguing about which branch was the best. So that was quite, that was one of my highlights of understanding those who have served, especially for my family. So I really appreciate all of that, those who have served, and also, what'd you say?
Army's the best.
Oh, boy. Here we go. Here we go. I wish you could talk to one of my great uncles, so they would probably persuade you in different directions, that's for sure. But talking about that and also acknowledging the memorial that is at Manuel Perez, and it's a beautiful place if you have not seen it, and to also honor one of the veterans that we have had represented from our community by the name of Captain Riley Pitts, Leroy Pitts, where we have a park designated in honor of his name, and his picture hangs at the National African American Museum in Washington, D.C., and this is a product of Oklahoma. So those are also those names that come to mind, especially those unknowns that I see every single day, and I think of Mr. John Billbury, and who I personally know, who served and retired as a Colonel. So that, I do thank them for their service, and those who are continuing to serve. As we talk about the things that are happening in our community, I also wanted to mention my disappointment about the ward signs being changed to just city permit required. And the reason I'm more disappointed is the fact of, to the point of James, that people that see those wards, that are a part of those wards, they like to park in them. They take ownership of them, just like we do, because they say, hey, some, I get text messages often that say, Nikki, I'm in Ward 7's parking spot. That brings me joy, to know that someone says, I'm a Ward 7 resident, and I parked in a Ward 7 space, because it's theirs, just as much as it is for us to park nine to five. So I would like to, for that to be revisited as well, to bring back that, those ward numbers in actuality. Again, it seems that some of the things we want to change, but other things we don't. So I'm just curious, what's more important? As we look at the zoo, I know one of the things that we did a couple, within the last week is Predator Pass has opened, so if you get a chance to check it out. Boomer and Pistol Pete, the new cheetahs. They're five-month-old cheetahs that are definitely exciting, and we also have some African wild dogs that are there, but I think the bedlam is going to be the real question, what happens with those young men. And Safari Lights is also happening at the Oklahoma City Zoo, so I'm hoping that you all will definitely get a chance to see that. This is the first time they've done this in a very long time, and there's an opportunity for you to drive through as well as walk up. And as we talk about Maps4 implementation, we talk about the things that we have already moved forward with, I'm still curious why we don't have any movement on 23rd and MLK, because that is a blighted area, and it's just sitting idle, and it seems to me, we don't have regard for that corner, but we have regard for a project that's already here. And I would like to see some movement as far as that hard corner being declared blighted. I would like to see some movement in us working towards the effort of redevelopment of that corner, and for us to ensure that our residents and parts of our community are able to benefit from what that corner needs to be for our residents, because I'm actually, I'm not tired of answering questions, I just, I'm frustrated that I can't. I can't answer the question that they bring me, because I can't get an answer. It's always the runaround. But it's easy for us to put an implementation plan in place to say, oh, yeah, we'll put an RFP out for this, but we're just going to wait on that. We're going to wait for a subcommittee to be in place for that, but we'll go ahead and work on this, which to me seems like it's not equitable, and we're choosing which projects we want to support before others, which I am not in favor of. I've also asked that we consider and add more members to the Economic Development Trust. I still haven't seen any numbers or any more information about that. I would also like for us to visit the Housing Authority Board to ensure there's representation and more representation from the community on that particular board. And as we continue to look at even our congressional districts and how those have been broken up, I think we should have more support, and I'm hoping, and I think we're all hopeful for the right response from our governor pertaining to the case of Julius Jones and the clemency hearing that happened last week, and a board that he chose, members that he chose to represent that body. And I'm hoping he'll do what he has been tasked by taking and accepting that recommendation from that body, and that's all I have.
I know Mayor Holt's not here this afternoon, but I wanted to personally thank him for going with me last Wednesday for the Bogart Street Dedication. It's called Bogart Parkway. We were supposed to have it in northwest Oklahoma City, but unfortunately, on Wednesday, it was cold, wet, and windy, so we had it right here. We had probably over 100 people that turned out, and it was a great event. There were two cars, carloads of Prosperity Bank employees that ended up actually going to the site, and so I'd like to tell them, I'm sorry we didn't get the news out to you, but it was a great ceremony. Next on the agenda is Item 13, Citizens to Be Heard. There being none, thanks, everybody, for your thoughts, input. I appreciate you all. We are adjourned.